Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is called Order. Members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are available on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. I now read the protocol for ensuring the proper conduct of city council meetings. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, I will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, I will issue a verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If still no cooperation, I will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If no cooperation, then I will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only to escort them out of the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed from the meeting, I will recess the meeting. That brings us to item number two, Call to the Audience. And I've got a little thing I gotta say here this evening. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this Work-Study Session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit for speaker. I've got a number of cards here for item 3C, which I'm gonna... A number of the speakers asked if they could actually talk during item 3C after the presentation, so I just want to make sure that I let everyone know that if we get past this portion of the agenda, you will be able to speak later. But I did want to see, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on items 3A or 3B? Yes, Councilmember Keating?
Mayor, since we have a number of speakers in item 3C, could we bring that to the front of the agenda so that it'll be here through the rest of the presentation?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. All right, so I don't see anyone here for items 3A or 3B, so I will close item number two and move to item three, which is the Issue Review Session. And as Councilmember Keating requested, and I agree with him, we're gonna go forward and move forward with item 3C, which is Proposed Tobacco Ordinance Update. We always want to make sure that if we have a lot of speakers, that we don't keep people here for the entire meeting, so great recommendation. I'm gonna go ahead and call upon Sarah, if you'd like to come forward, and Madeline, to give us a presentation on item 3C. And then after the presentation is over, I will then make sure to call all of these speaker cards here. I think I have three virtually, and everyone else will be in person.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Sarah Keon, City Council Lady, Councilwoman Navarro.
Hi, good evening, Madeline McConville, Council Lady. So we're here to present an update on the proposed tobacco ordinance for you all. Okay, so this aligns with specifically Performance Measure 1.21, Youth Alcohol Marijuana and Opioid Usage Rate, which aligns with your strategic priority of safe and secure communities. Okay, so the background. This has been about two and a half years in the making. First started at the Human Services and Community Safety Council Committee back in October of 2021. This was presented and brought to by Tempe Parents, the Tempe Coalition, Community Bridges, and a few other partners. At that meeting, you know, the council members had directed staff to pursue, you know, drafting a proposed ordinance or developing a policy to bring to a future work-study session. Then that work-study session was actually the November 17th, where council, you know, directed staff to, you know, continue researching, continue pursuing this type of ordinance. You know, after all of that work, there have been, you know, stakeholder meetings, public feedback facilitated. We went to HS, the HSCS Community Council Committee several times. And tonight, we are presenting specifically the recommendation that was pursued out of the HSCS Committee recommending advancing the draft ordinance of specifically raising the required age for tobacco purchase to 21, and then establishing a licensing fee and program for tobacco sellers. Just want to emphasize that this is not the same ordinance as the one that was drafted previously, so there is no, you know, we're no longer banning flavored vape, so.
We get into the tobacco laws and purpose. Back in 2019, the Amendment to the Food Drug and Cosmetic Act was to raise the federal minimum age from 18 to 21, was signed into the law. Arizona is one of the 10 states that currently does not have a statewide tobacco licensing registry. Some reasons for this, to have the ordinance in place, is retailers that sell tobacco must comply with tobacco laws, or they risk losing their license possibly. It helps decrease the access to tobacco, which helps keep this out of the hands of our youth. It controls also the location and density of tobacco retailers, and also allows for the imposition of additional restriction on the sale of tobacco products. Even though this is not a statewide law, there are several local municipalities that have passed a retail tobacco licensing ordinance, which they've established the minimum age to be raised from 18 to 21, and they also have imposed civil penalties along with having annual licensing fees. A couple of those mentioned are Tucson and Flagstaff. They're probably the most similar in size to what we're trying to do here in Tempe. Cottonwood Douglas and Goodyear also have raised the age from 18 to 21. As you can see on this, we just put a comparison sheet, so you can kind of see that what Tempe is proposing to do falls in the same alignment with what the other local municipalities are doing. Currently, there will be a $300 annual fee is what's being proposed. There are a four-strike penalty structure and education component that is in place with this ordinance proposal. The first strike is, it's a 500 mandatory fine, and there is a free mandatory training only associated with the first strike. If there is a second penalty, second strike, there is a, the fine increases to $750, and they do get their license suspended for seven days. A third strike is a $1,000 fine, and they get their license suspended for 30 days. If there is a fourth strike, it's a $1,000 penalty, and then license revocation. So our proposed Tempe tobacco ordinance is to increase the age from 18 to 21 for the purchase of tobacco products and implement the licensing fee and permit program, which was annual fee of $300. Guidelines, there is a penalty structure, as we just discussed, in place, and there is an education and training component that is gonna be part of this program. The education training program isn't just to consumers, to people that are purchasing the product, but it also is an education training program for the retailers as well. The proposed management plan, it is a, it is a combination of a couple departments of the city, which it will reside under Tax and Licensing, which is gonna maintain the database and the licensing of the tobacco vendors, and it will issue the fines and license revocation notices. Tempe Police Department is going to be the enforcement component, but again, this is a response-driven, based on the complaints that are received. And PD will then coordinate with licensing to work with the retailers to get that out. There has been great strides. I would just like to take a moment to compliment our Finance Department, Josh Bias, I knew I was gonna say Bias, I told him I was gonna screw his name up, sorry, Josh, and to Lizette Camacho. And then for PD, Commander Hale has been instrumental in working with our state agencies, more specific, the Attorney General's Office. There are gonna be really good community partnerships that are gonna help roll out this to be a successful ordinance. And then Tempe City Council, of course, is going to monitor the data that comes in and then make future recommendations moving forward. This is just an overview of operationally, and it is high level, of just how the complaints will come in, if they're initiated, whether that be, if they are, and ideally, they would be the tobacco retailer that is going to be applying for their application and renewals, which will go to the Tax and Licensing Division until that will be accomplished. In the event that it comes in as a formal complaint, most likely that's gonna come through PD, where they will follow up, a citation will be issued, and that will go through the court system, and then depending on the outcome of their, it will go back to Tax and Licensing. So again, there's a lot of steps in between there, there's a lot of moving parts, and that's still in the working part of this ordinance.
So like I had mentioned, you know, this is just the, you know, not the final, but potentially the final iteration of the proposed tobacco ordinance, and there's, you know, been a lot of public involvement, but specifically on this iteration of the proposed ordinance, you know, we've had public meetings. There was two public meetings on March 20th, both virtual and in person. So those two meetings, we had about 60 people at each meeting, so about 120 people total. There was also a public survey that was distributed via the Tempe Forum. It was open for about two weeks. 2023, there was 188 responses, so 85 respondents actually provided an address with approximately 75% in Tempe. As you can see, that's kind of the map on the right, which will show you where specific people responded, if they provided that address. Additionally, you know, we received feedback via council communicators, as you all know, you get emails, you get phone calls, so there was a bunch of ways that people provided us feedback on the ordinance. So this is specifically gonna be the next, the next six slides are gonna be questions that were asked on that survey. So the first question, do you support establishing a tobacco sales license in the city of Tempe? 72% said yes, with 24% saying no. If a tobacco sales license is established, do you support the proposed fee structure to ensure compliance? 71% said yes, then 24% said no. The next question, do you support increasing the minimum age for a purchase of tobacco products to age 21? 75% said yes, 22% said no. And then the next two questions are really just to kind of gauge the demographics of people responding to the question. So do you currently use tobacco products? 57% said no, 26% said yes, and then 17% of the people who responded actually used to use tobacco products. And then the final question, do you currently own, manage, or work at an establishment that sells tobacco products? 76% said no, and then 21% said yes. So where we're at right now, you know, is presenting to you all, and then pending council consensus, you know, there's a legal posting requirement of 60 days on the Tax and License webpage. Then, you know, we're gonna draft a communications plan to business to make sure that they know about what's going on next, and there'll be two public hearings at regular council meetings pending August and September. And then even after, you know, you guys all potentially pass the ordinance, there'll still be continued observation and evaluation of the draft or of the tobacco ordinance.
As far as questions, if you have any, we do have staff here that is prepared to answer anything specific that you might have as well.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Let me go first to Councilmember Garland, then Councilmember Keating, then I want to try to open it up for public comment to those in the audience, so, okay, sure. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the presentation. This has been a long time coming to at least get this far on what we were gonna do in the city of Tempe, so I appreciate the work that you guys put into this. Well, one thing I want to make sure that we have on this, and you had mentioned in there, is about the compliance portion of this. I know that there was mention, it's working, we will be working with the Attorney Gen... I just want to confirm that that is what we're gonna do, that we're gonna be working with the Attorney General's Office and the FDA in their program, where they have people go into these establishments secretly and try to get purchase, these products. I want to make sure that that is what we're gonna be doing, because that is a really important part of this. It's not just getting calls from somebody in the community. I want to make sure that there are other ways that we are checking to make sure that the, that the establishments are doing what they say they're gonna do, and they are not gonna be selling.
I'm gonna let Commander Hale address that, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, and appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. The, absolutely, we're gonna be working with the FDA. We had an opportunity to ride with them and the FDA and the AG's office and watch them as they do their, their compliance checks. They coordinate with each other, so they're not hitting the same person multiple times, and so there's good coordination already in place between the AG's office and the FDA. Our plan is to ride with them when they come to Tempe, and so when they do their compliance checks, they have to get a statistical represent, representation of tobacco retailers in the state and, and out of each city. So we will know that by the end of the year, we'll also have a statistical representation in our compliance checks of the different retailers in the city of Tempe. The AG's office conducts all the enforcement, they seize any evidence that they need. We will then be doing a report that mirrors the information that they're getting, so we can feed that back to Tax and License, and so there's any kind of administrative actions that need to be taken. So we're not gonna change the enforcement action that's already been taking place, that it's ongoing. We're gonna accompany them, it's kind of a force multiplier, that's one less agent that they have to provide, that they can go out and hit other areas in the state, and then so we'll be assisting them on their compliance checks when they come to Tempe. So they've got a great program, there's no reason to duplicate anything, they've already got undercover Cubs that go in and do the buying. You know, we had success or failure in Tempe on that particular night, and more success than failure, but, you know, we, I do see that there is a problem, and the compliance checks are, are helping that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I like the fact that we're gonna be working with the Attorney General's Office and the FDA. I think, yeah, it is a force multiplier, and I think it's gonna be able to make sure that our businesses, we're holding them accountable for what they do in their business. And again, I think the licensing is a great first step on anything else that we want to do moving forward, so I really appreciate that, so thank you so much, Commander.
A neat part of their, their operation as well is they have an education component, and so their education is already put into place, and really, we're trying to set people up for, to win and to succeed, right? And so the, they'll, they'll explain to the retailer that failed, you'll have the opportunity to take this course, the judge, of course, will have the opportunity then to either waive fines or fees, and that's up to the, to the judge when they meet with the judge. But the course is there for them to help take and then to get educated. And the one failure that I did witness that occurred in Tempe was, appeared to be a, you know, an educational issue. You know, so the person was just getting, you know, kind of fluent in English, still having some trouble culturally, and was just trying to get the register to work, overrode the system, and sold to the Cub. And so it was a, you know, one of those situations where they just need to get educated.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Commander. And is that the education that you guys were talking about that was free, that will be handy? Perfect, wonderful, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Councilmembers Garland and Navarro, for bringing this forward to us. I'm very pleased with what we've come up with and the process that got us to this point. I just have one quick comment. After the first violation, I mean frankly, I would like to see a more aggressive fine structure. This is because I'm thinking about like the scooters, right? We, we made it so that if they're violating city policy, the fines come into play where it's not worth risking being caught violating the policy because the fines are heavy enough, right? So like, look, the first strike, 500 bucks and your free training. At that point, you should be, know what you're supposed to be doing. $750, I don't, I don't know what the price of cigarettes are, but I imagine they're like eight, eight to 10 bucks. I mean, I would just like to see, make sure that it's not worth risking violating this ordinance, because if you only get caught X amount of times, well, then you're still making money if you're being charged 750 bucks, say you get caught every hundredth time. That's just my two cents on it, but this is an ordinance in which I will be pleased to support when it actually comes to a vote, so I do appreciate that. That's just some feedback for you. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I would like to point out that the 750 includes a seven-day suspension of the license, so they wouldn't be able to sell tobacco products for seven days.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I just, you know, looking at the survey, I love that you guys did the public involvement survey, and 75% of our voters want this, so I will be glad to support this ordinance going through for raising it to 21. Thank you so much for also for your presentation. It was excellent, and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say I will be supporting it. From the other part with the education, I am excited that the kids that are under the age of 18, this will be, this is gonna be phenomenal for us to be able to help with the Tempe Union on making sure that the cell is not in Tempe, because we do have a lot of tobacco-related suspensions for that, because they do it over and over again, so this is really gonna help. I ask, can this presentation that we have, can we actually have this kind of, it just be debrief in one of our governing board meetings? Because I would love for the, for our governing board to understand exactly what the city of Tempe is doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I can, I can work with you on that, I just wanted to make sure, and I just want to say thank you so much for the great presentation, too.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, guys. A great presentation, but also thank you for shepherding this throughout, of course, of close to two years. This truly was a community-involved event. This community organically got this discussion together. Organically, we got to this place and time, and it really did have an impact on what we're doing here as a city, and how we're trying to listen to our community and the outreach and in terms of trying to get information out there and trying to grab information has been tremendous. We always can improve in various areas, but I'm just telling you that, you know, we do a good job and trying our best to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. I think this is, as I can see by a lot of faces here, I think this is, this is really pleasing, it's really a first step. I do know that, you know, this is a first step to look at what we can do as a city, but I don't know if this issue is over. We have to make sure that we're, making sure that we're doing our part as a city, but at the same time, you know, parents, schools, you know, personal responsibility to this and education to this is paramount. And we also need to look at the other sources that might potentially have some sort of hindrance in terms of Snapchat and other social medias that might contribute to this. But at the end of the day, this is a great first two steps, and I think that these are recognizable steps that other cities can mirror, in my opinion, and I think smartly they should, because as holistically as a region, I think we have more strength, and we have more power to do the right things for our community and listen to our community and making sure that we're doing our due diligence, to make sure that we're not getting tobacco in kids under 21, and we're trying to give them a chance. And I think that the more education, the more information out there on this is gonna be powerful. I do like the fact that working with the shop owners, educating with the shop owners, trying to get them to be good players, I think this is, this is just purely a, a first wave of, hey, listen, let's be a city that works together. If you want to be a responsible shop owner that sells tobaccos, do it the right way. Be responsible in the right forms, and it's not worth going down this road. I think that's the real message I want to get out. I want to see the data after this stuff. I want to make sure that we are collecting the data over the course of this period and to make sure that we are doing things and tweaking things as needed, to do, to make sure the program as it is is working out. If it's not, what are, what are the things that we need to do to go forward? So I think that this, for us to come to a vote in our next formal meeting, I think it's gonna be a huge deal, and I appreciate your guys' time and effort that you put into this, so it's been really tremendous.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and try to get into the public comment here this evening, and council will have opportunities to comment after the public comment, if there's additional things that pop up in your minds. So what we're gonna do is we also, we always go in the order that the cards are received, and I'm gonna try to bunch up the virtual cards that have come in first, which means the first speaker this evening is Charlie Moses. Is Charlie online?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Please state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Charlie Moses, and I'm submitting testimony on behalf of Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes. We're a national organization with Tempe volunteers that prioritizes the health and well-being of youth. We're in full support of the proposed ordinance to establish a local tobacco retail license, including regular compliance checks and to raise the minimum tobacco sale age to 21 years old. Tobacco products are blatantly targeting youth, and we have data that over 50% of Tempe's tobacco retailers have been issued citations for selling tobacco products to youth. Youth having access to tobacco products, especially e-cigarettes, is a serious public health crisis, and things need to change. We need to implement the tobacco retail licensing ordinance and raise the tobacco purchasing age to 21 in order to address this issue and protect the health of Tempe's youth and the health of the greater Tempe community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is also virtual, is Doug Ball. Mr. Ball, are you there?
I'm sorry.
There you are. Yes, sir, please state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Doug Ball, I live in Meridian, Idaho. I am here representing Jackson's Food Stores. We have 11 stores in the greater city area, and one of them is in Tempe. Jackson supports the proposed sales license and penalty structure of the proposed ordinance. We actually do monthly third-party audits. They're performed monthly to ensure that our employees are following the company policy of checking IDs for anyone that looks under 40 years old on any age-restricted item, including tobacco. We take age-restricted sales very seriously, and if any of our sales associates are found to have sold an age-restricted item to an under, to a minor, they are terminated. We also fully support raising the minimum age to purchase tobacco to 21. Jackson has always been 21-plus on tobacco since it was signed as a federal law in 2019, so we, we support that 100%, and we are already doing it. We also would like to address the fact that there was a flavor ban at one point attached to this. We'd like to thank you for removing that. We've dealt with local flavor bans in the past, for a time in Oregon, for times in California, and it puts the stores in those municipalities with flavor bans at a tremendous disadvantage when, when the adult tobacco consumers can drive just down the block, just down the street, and get their flavored products. So we applaud you for doing that, and thank you for that. I have two minor concerns. One is Section 16A 198 signage. It's a little ambiguous as far as the sign has to be placed within six feet of where tobacco products are purchased, and visible both the employee and the patron. I'd look a little more clarity, does that mean like the point of sale where the pill is, or where the cigarette rack is, that kind of thing? And then in Article II, Section 2147, Responsibility of Owners, it says that we must protect the entrances and exits from outdoor drifting environmental tobacco or electronic smoke, smoking device smoke. I'd like something that, again, is less ambiguous as far as the smoke can't even there. There's a gust of wind, and the smoke gets in there, how are we gonna just, you know, how are we gonna enforce that? Something more solid, like everybody must be 20 feet away from any entrance and exit, that at least little gray area, I'd like to see something more like that. But overall, without the flavor ban, I mostly support this almost 100%.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Claudia Rotas.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members in Tempe. Claudia Rotas, I am the Director of Southern Region for the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. I have taken this journey with city council, an organization, as part of Flavors Hook Kids Phoenix, and so we have been a part of this conversation for the last, I guess, maybe 18 to 20 months. We appreciate the thoughtful discussion and the thoughtful, thoughtfulness in, in the efforts in making something happen in the city of Tempe, in terms of trying to put a licensing forward and raising the age to 21. We still have some concerns around the compliance checks. I did hear some comments being made earlier on that there's gonna be some partnerships with the AG's office, but we'd love the opportunity to still continue to have discussions and make sure that there are compliance checks built into the ordinance, rather than just sort of an agreement with the AG's office, so that it does make this, the compliance checks and the enforcement's as strong as possible. We do support what's on currently right now, if we are able to kind of make those comments and have some consideration out there, but what we would ask the council today is to please have discussion and put a date on coming back to the Flavors policy. The original discussion included the licensing, raising the age, and Flavors, and a Flavors policy, and while we hear from you all that it's better to separate the issue, would be great to be able to have a commitment from city council on when they plan to come back for the Flavors policy. We have shown that there's community support around there, and we know that there's gonna be youth that are gonna continue to have access to these products. So we're happy to answer any questions. We hope that there will be continued discussions and opportunities to allow, where we can make that compliance a part of it, but we do ask, please, 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 if there can be a commitment from city council today on giving us a timeframe on when there's an opportunity to come back and revisit that additional policy. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you so much. Okay, now turning to the in-person speakers this evening. The first speaker I have is Joseph Yuhas. Please come up, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the Joseph Uhas, I am with the Tempe Flavors Hook Kids Tempe Coalition, resident of the city of Phoenix, 27-year resident of the valley. Heard today, and I've heard over the course of the past 19 months, the word "data." It's often been said these past many months, there's a desire for data in order to determine how serious is the youth tobacco epidemic in Tempe. Well, I'll tell you, the data's before you, it's been presented to you. In a sum, in sum, it's 153, 10, 53, 25, and 62. 153, Tempe is a haven for big tobacco with over 153 tobacco retailers. 10, 10 times more retailers than the total number of McDonald's and Starbucks combined. 25, 25% of those retailers are within the 100, 1,320-foot distance requirement from schools as established by your own ordinance. 53, 53% of Tempe's tobacco retailers have been cited for selling their products to kids, and that number includes a number of retailers who have testified before you these past 19 months that they have clean records, when the citation records show otherwise. Finally, 62, 62% of Tempe voters have supported by scientific poll a comprehensive action to address the epidemic of youth tobacco use. 153, 10, 53, 25, and 62. I hope you write those numbers down. That's data. You and city staff have been provided this data, again, over, over the course of the past 15 public meetings, but sometimes data alone doesn't provide the ultimate direction. Sometimes it's a matter of moral judgment, it's political courage. And make no mistake about it, the long history of big tobacco and those who shill their products and, and in particular, target kids in communities of color is a moral issue. Licensing is critical because it allows officials to determine which stores are selling tobacco products. That helps ensures that complying with the law and that they aren't selling to kids, and to be sure, this is a positive step. But know that this is just one step. The Flavors Hook Kids Tempe Coalition continues to support a comprehensive approach that includes a restriction on the sale of all flavored tobacco products. So if the council moves forward to enact a licensing ordinance that excludes the flavored tobacco provisions that were included in earlier drafts of this ordinance, then it is incumbent that the council enact the strongest possible licensing ordinance, including regular compliance checks. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Joanna Struthers. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, City Council members, my name is Joanna Struthers. I represent the American Lung Association. And considering the enactment of a tobacco retail license ordinance, Tempe leaders are to be credited for recognizing there's a serious problem with teens under the age who are using tobacco products in the community, and that needs to be addressed. That also reflects the same concerns presented by public health groups, the Flavors Hook Kids Tempe Coalition, and many other groups and, and citizens. Tempe is experiencing a high rate of sales to underage kids, with 53% of Tempe's tobacco retailers issued citations for the sale of tobacco products to kids over the past five years, and many on multiple occasions. A retail license that is comprehensive, which includes annual compliance checks, a penalty structure that includes suspension and revocation of the license, is needed to keep our kids safe and healthy. The proposed ordinance does not include annual compliance checks, which really is the bones to making this license work. And in fact, I should say, it's really the lungs to making this work, because if you can't breathe, nothing else matters. I will say the Lung Association is disappointed that after many meetings and months of work, the proposed ordinance does not go far enough to truly protect kids with flavor restriction. I agree with some of the previous comments, and we would like to see the city come up with a timeline and when that would be revisited. A recent poll conducted by Lake Research Partner found that a solid majority, 61% of Tempe voters, favor an ordinance to end the sale of all tobacco products. Tempe voters prioritize preventing addiction in young people over arguments against ending the sale of flavored e-cigarettes, menthol cigarettes, and other flavored tobacco products. With that, I want to thank you and appreciate all that you have taken the time. I know it's been a long time coming, and we appreciate you hearing our concerns and look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Floyd Alvin Galloway. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Floyd Alvin Galloway. I'm a resident of Tempe. I've been involved with Flavors Hook Kids Tempe Coalition for a number of months. I've been a community servant, past president of the NAACP East Valley, a leader in the scouting organizations, and all these organizations have focused on social justice and youth development and the health. And I am supportive of your retail licensing ordinance, but as a person who knows that smoking and using vaping is a problem with our youth, we need something stronger. We do need a flavor ban in this city. Tempe has been very progressive in its history, gone from a sundown town to a very diverse city. Look at the council, and you have taken courage to enact laws as far as other ordinance relating in 2014 to e-cigarettes and smoking in restaurants. And we need Tempe leadership to come strong and be progressive as it is and know that can be, and this effort to ban flavored tobacco products that have and still continue to plague our youth. 15,000 flavored tobacco products, that's ridiculous. 150-plus tobacco retailers in a city this size, I think is ridiculous. We need to have, make sure that the compliance effort in this ordinance is lived, lived up to. We make, we need to make sure that this is only the first step, as Councilman Navarro said, because this will not go away affecting our kids with just a licensing ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Chanelle Poe. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Chanelle Poe. I am a resident of Phoenix, but I believe to call myself an ambassador for the state of Arizona. I am representing Flavors Hook Kids Tempe and our number of coalition leaders. We are here to talk about the tobacco ordinance, and while we appreciate the strides that you all have made in terms of establishing licensing, which I said the state should have done a long time ago, and also this structure fee, we cannot ignore the public health impetus. And I'm directly looking at Councilmember Navarro and Garland, because you are the ones that are leading the Human Services and Community Safety Program. We have a sitting governing board member from the Tempe Union High School District that serves on this council. Not only has that board adopted and had litigation against tobacco distributors and manufacturers, but they just said that students are being suspended. Let's talk about seat time. Let's talk about getting our children caught back up from COVID-19 and how critical it is for them to be in school. Children and students are, are going to the restroom throughout the middle of the day to, to smoke, to vape, and the reason that they're doing so is because of deep-rooted mental health issues and also other coping mechanism where they don't have healthy strategies. When we look to the city of Tempe, we are looking for you to look out for the best interest, health, and well-being. When we come to you and say, in the black community, we addicted to menthol. 89% of blacks smokers smoke menthol cigarettes. 45,000 die each year. How can you be complacent without taking a deeper look into a flavors restriction? May 21st, we just commemorated No Menthol Sunday, because 45,000 people of our community that look like you and I are going to perish. 30% of whites smoke menthol cigarettes, and 40% of our students are addicted to menthol. Further inaction of creating a comprehensive tobacco ordinance will lead to a lifetime of addiction. We are looking for, when we look to the future, we're looking for the next 20 years from now, and we want our youth and our students to look out for our well-being and best interests as health disparities and issues continue to arise. Show that you care. Show that you are standing in the gap, and decide to put people over the premise of profit. Tobacco is an invasive species impeding on the city of Tempe. This is no silver bullet by creating the licensing and the fine structure. While it is a start, we have to look within ourselves and go deeper and actually look at the data that is before us that shows the sharp racial disparities. We can't say that we have a diversity and equity and inclusion department when we do not take into fact of the healthcare disparities that are hurting people from my community and other marginalized communities that have been targeted for decades. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next speaker I have is also virtual, Megan Belter. I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly. Is Megan in the... Okay, okay. All right, Megan, can you hear me? Hi, Megan, can you hear me? All right, what I'm going to do, let me go back to the speakers here, and I'll try to see if I can circle back around at the end. The next speaker I have is Charlese Jackson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. As you stated, my name is Charlese Jackson. I actually live in Maricopa, Arizona, but saw this as a very important issue that we have here. I'm actually a member of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, part of the Phoenix Metropolitan Area Chapter. I'm here today more as a mom than anything else. I'm here with my 14-year-old son. He lives in Georgia, but he does come here for the summer, and so he wanted to be here today because we know this is an issue that needs to be resolved. He actually came to me a while ago when he was in elementary school telling me that kids were in the bathroom smoking e-cigarettes. I know part of that issue is the flavor. You know, you have strawberry, you have watermelon, you have all these different flavors that really do actually cater more to children than adults. I grew up with a father who was an avid cigarette smoker. I remember watching him and thinking it was so cool to see the smoke. I tried my first cigarette in middle school. It was awful. It was terrible, and it made me see like, this is not for me. So I raised my son to know this is not the way to go. Tobacco is not a product you should be experimenting with. He did witness my father actually going through having throat cancer. This is something that I would want to protect my own child against, as well as other children, not just children of color, but all children. I do believe that Tempe being pretty much an epicenter of college students as well in our area is a great starting point to get this ban put in place, because in that way, it can start to trickle to other areas just like Maricopa. In my city of Maricopa, it's literally a population of about 70,000 people now, mind-boggling, since it's like a little island out here. But I see lots of kids under 18 smoking e-cigarettes, smoking these vape pens. They think it's cool. They see the light, they see the smoke, they see what, they see it on TV, and they think that this is the way to go. So I do think putting this in place will start to have that trickle effect of just monetizing, not monetizing, but minimizing these children having access to these products. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Nicole Olmstead. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Council members, Mayor Woods, I'm Nicole Olmstead with the American Heart Association. I'm also a Tempe resident, and I work in Tempe. Once again, I want to thank you for the work that you and your staff have put in on the tobacco retail license. While we are very disappointed that despite all of the work that has been done, the city is still not addressing the sale of flavored tobacco products, we do recognize the efforts to establish a retail license that may have an, that may have an impact on the sale of tobacco products to those underage. However, this license is incomplete. Knowing where tobacco is being sold is only one aspect of the license. It is imperative that the ordinance include at least one compliance check per year. Otherwise, it's just a piece of paper with no teeth, and therefore, no better than what our opponents are saying about Flagstaff and Tucson. Without a compliance check, retailers that are currently selling to those underage, and they are, I know this from personal experience, they will just simply continue. They literally have no reason to stop, because no one is checking to see if they are following the law. And unless you have parents and others like me who will pick up the phone and call their friendly attorney general's office and report underage sales, and I have done it on multiple occasions to multiple locations in Tempe, because they are selling to my 20-year-old daughter, they have been selling to her since she was 16. I haven't been able to stop it, and I work for the American Heart Association. Unless you have people like me who are willing to make those complaints, nothing will change, and you continue, you will continue to hear about a statewide solution. What you don't hear is that with that statewide solution comes a very big cost, preemption. The tobacco industry fully intends to take away the local power over this issue. If you wait for a statewide solution, you're never going to get to do anything. It's important to get this right. Include the compliance check. Work with the organizations that are already out in communities checking retailers to make sure they are not selling products to our kid, but it needs to be included in the ordinance. That is how you can truly make an impact, at least until you do something about flavors. We ask you to set a timeframe for when you're going to address flavors. The public supports this. You have organizations that are deeply, deeply committed to making sure that health is addressed, and we support this as well. You can do the right thing by protecting our residents from a deadly addictive product. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Dante San Miguel. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dante San Miguel, and I live in Gilbert, Arizona, but will soon be here in Tempe. The reason I'm here today is because in 2021, I was on a lunch break with a coworker. She asked me to hit her strawberry kiwi-flavored vape, and I said, no, I'm good, because I never loved how it made me feel, gave me a headache, sometimes made my stomach hurt. She said, come on, it tastes so good, it's the best flavor I've ever had. I said, fine. Took it. I hate strawberry kiwi-flavored. I still hit it, because she told me how good it tasted. The next morning, I woke up with 103-degree fever, my whole body was shaking, and my lungs were on fire. I ended up going to the hospital, and that's where I spent a long stay fighting for my life in the ICU. Lost my ability to walk, I couldn't have a conversation without my oxygen plummeting, couldn't clean my own body, it was a really hard time, all just because of one hit of one vape that was bought by an underage 17-year-old from a smoke shop paying with cash, and there I was in the hospital. I ended up having to go through the approval process of a double lung transplant because of this, and I thought that my life expectancy was now going to be suddenly five years, all because of one stupid strawberry kiwi-flavored vape. Luckily, I fought my way out of it. In the middle of the night, my body luckily made a full recovery, and we still don't really know how I'm here today. But I'm really here representing all of the kids who are not going to have as happy of stories like my ending was, you know? People around me are hooked. I mean, kids and teenagers that have been doing this since they were 15 years old, if they quit for, if they stop for a day, two days, their bodies are shaking. I mean, they are terrible people to be around, you never, they're so angry. I mean, these are teenagers that are already experiencing this. And it's really frustrating, because even with people that are close to me, that were right there with me, they're so addicted to these devices and these flavors that they can't quit. It's frustrating to see that there are more consequences, it seems, for people like me, an 18-year-old kid that took a vape hit that was fighting for my life versus the smoke shop owner that sold it to us in the first place. The fact that there isn't something in place right now, a serious consequence for this happening, I can't, I couldn't believe it at first, and that's really why I'm here today. I'm really glad to see that there's a lot of support around this licensing issue, because I think it's the least that we could do, you know? And yeah, I thank you for your time, guys. I just really hope that moving forward, we can really prioritize the future of generations' health rather than temporary money, and I know that money is going to be important, but so is our lives. I mean, we're just innocent kids that are seeing blue raspberry, strawberry, kiwi-flavored vapes that are suddenly intrigued by all of this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Paul Yuland. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Woods, members of the council. My name is Paul Yuland. I'm here today as past Chair of the Board of the Arizona Business Education Coalition. We're a statewide organization advocating for kids and education through K-12, and we're here to encourage the mayor and council to approve the tobacco licensing ordinance. The ordinance... the mayor and council to approve the tobacco licensing ordinance. The ordinance has been, as previously discussed, a lengthy and inclusive process, including feedback from all stakeholders. The ordinance is the first and an important step in the process of making Tempe a safer and healthier community. The facts and figures about the damage of tobacco and vaping have been discussed, not only here tonight, but at many prior meetings and hearings. The fact is flavored tobacco is harmful and addictive to the community, and unfortunately, as our previous speakers talked about, are being sold to underage youth. And so, the ordinance is an important first step in limiting the tobacco and flavored tobacco to youth. We encourage the mayor and council to take a stand against big tobacco and pass the ordinance and move forward with other initiatives, including a flavored ban. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Stephanie Siete. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. I know it's been an ongoing issue for almost the last two years, and you've heard, I'm with Community Bridges, Tempe Coalition, Tobacco-Free Kids, Flavors Hook Kids. You kind of know my approach from where I work. But that said, I actually typed up some things just to kind of remind people in general, like why we're here. Vaping, right? It's a behavior of heating chemicals or toxins from liquid to vapor to inhale into our lungs. We get these ultrafine particles that go deep into our lungs, causing damage. We have flavorants like diacetal, thanks to serious lung disease, and heavy metals such as nickel, tin, and lead, and nicotine. We all think of nicotine as addictive, but I wanted to go in a little depth about this. Nicotine has a negative impact on the synapses that connect our brain cells. This can spur changes in the brain area controlling essential functions like mood, attention, learning, and impulse control. Additionally, many vaping devices produce vapors containing that lead, which can lead to brain damage. So, electronic cigarettes, they still emit carcinogens. This is an industry that's still pretty unregulated. And we know that the marketing is targeting our youth through social media, and we have over 15,000 flavors. I mean, we should be reminded of that. It's not 1,500. It's 15,000 flavors out there targeting our kids. Exposure to e-cigarette aerosols can lead to, gosh, even just bacteria in our mouth, which can be associated with tooth decay, cavities, and gum disease. And one little fact here too is that vaping and smoking increases this risk of bursting, which can lead to our lungs collapsing, kind of like what Dante was talking about. Signs of collapsed lung include sharp chest or shoulder pain, shortness of breath, and difficulty breathing. So, I mean, in summary, what are the risks? Addiction, breathing problems, and damage to organs like our lungs. I mean, I think that's just a reminder of like, why we're here. We're talking about a product that's dangerous to everyone, not just kids. And when I think of kids, I think teenagers still 18-years-of-age, so I applaud you guys for raising the age because this is a dangerous product for everyone. But if we're going to talk about underage, let's just remember that there's still 2.5 million high school and middle school kids in this country that are using e-cigarettes. Data does say that the age group with the highest rate of vaping is 18 to 34-years-of-age. So, we still have those 18-year-olds in there. Good on us for increasing the age. Just some other quick facts. You know, you're seeing in the UK, they know that Elf Bar, that's the most popular flavored disposable brand, they're pulling that off the shelves because of the illegal nicotine levels. Canada, I just saw this while I was sitting here, is now putting warning labels on individual products, like poison in every puff listed on every individual product. So, again, good on Tempe, business license is important, raising the age is important, training and education is necessary. That's why I kind of just wanted to share some of those facts because ultimately, this is about protecting people and keeping Tempe healthy, safe, and aware. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Graham Matthews. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you for having me, council members and Mayor Woods. My name's Graham Matthews. I have been a Tempe resident for over 20 years and a homeowner here. I'm gonna go a little off topic, but I believe it's on topic. I want to discuss the most deadly obstacle to the success, health, and well-being of our youth today. Fentanyl is the most dangerous threat facing our youth in America today. This costs less than a school lunch and can kill you. Enforcement and restriction in use and penalties and seizures will drive down its use dramatically and drive the price up immensely. Three to four people in Arizona, as of last year's figures, will die today. Some of them may be in Tempe, probably younger people. I feel like I don't hear fentanyl discussed enough. Moving on to the license. Nicotine can be bad, but I believe the energy spent on this licensing and this effort, it's a good community effort, and I would like to see the same type of effort spent on reducing fentanyl usage, and I feel like that would pay bigger dividends in our community. Second of all, I want to discuss flavors. Flavors are a great part of life. You know, there's salt, and pepper, and sugar, and hot sauce, and we all use them, and they're becoming very popular in the drinks and everything. So, I believe, you know, flavors are attracting everyone, not just youth, as has been discussed today. I think that's a silly concept. Alcohol companies like Smirnoff, they make cranberry, pineapple, strawberry, dozens and dozens of flavors. These huge conglomerates, these multi-billion-dollar companies, they're not making these flavors to sell to little kids and people under 21. This is totally regulated, and they're gearing to 21 and up. That's gonna be the lion's share of their market. They're not gonna be in business marketing to a small sect of the market that's gonna have trouble getting, you know, the alcohol. And it's similar with nicotine products. You know, it's people in their 20s and 30s that are hip, and older people that are hip that want these flavored alcohols, and I believe it's similar with e-cigarettes. I appreciate the efforts on this licensing, and I think it's a great thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, let me see if I can circle back around to Meghan Belter. Is Meghan Belter still in the audience? All right. Actually, Ms. Williams, you are up next. I thought you were staying up here, otherwise I would have flagged you down immediately. So, our next speaker is Donna Williams. So, please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor Woods, council members. So, you've heard a lot today about flavors. I'm here representing the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Phoenix Metropolitan Chapter. We have members all over the county, including Tempe. We are here as members of the Flavor Hook Kids Coalition. We as well are disappointed that we're not here to talk about flavors today. You've had a lot of speakers tell you that, so I'm echoing that sentiment as well. I certainly hope we'll have time in the future, in the near future, to have that conversation because I think it's a conversation worth having. But I do want to talk about the ordinance because that's why we're here, right? And, you know, the city of Tempe operates in excellence, and I know that you want to continue that. And so, I know if you embark upon this ordinance and enacting this ordinance, that you'll also want to do so in excellence. So, I want to give you some things to think about as we go down this path. So, I think we can use the retail licensing fees for enforcement, education, training for community members. Like, let's make this a program that not only keeps the community safe, which is kind of the main thing that you want to do, is healthy and wellness for the community, but also, there's a continuing impact in terms of educating and why are we doing this and why it's important. How about strong enforcement as well? We had one speaker talk about having those checks and balances there. It's gonna be very important because we know that when people aren't watched, they don't always do the right thing. So, we're gonna have to build in some kind of mechanism that allows people to know that we're watching, right? That we're paying attention. Let's ensure that retail owners and not clerks, right? Not the people behind the register are being punished for breaking this ordinance, for the fines, and responsible for paying those fines and fees. We don't want to interfere with the little guy's ability to earn an income. Let's offer training for these owners, right? So, they can't say that they didn't know, or they weren't aware. But we can offer training and rules, and let's make sure that those rules and that training is culturally appropriate and sensitive so that everybody has access to it. And then, let's be frank. Not every small retailer has a significant percentage of their sales towards tobacco. So, some retailers will opt to not sell tobacco after this goes through. And so, what kinds of grants, tax credits, and other things can we offer these business people for not selling tobacco products? Something to think about. Let's prioritize continued involvement and impact on communities. So, what is the impact, the overall impact of this measure on the communities? Let's continue to monitor tobacco use, particularly with youth. You heard from one of our members, Charles E., and her 14-year-old son. Those stories are real, and they happen all day, every day in this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That is the last of the cards that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention on item 3C. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion for that item. Council, I see Councilmember Garland's hand.
So, thank you so much for everybody who came to talk to us today. I appreciate what you're saying, and we hear you. So, I would like to say that, you know, Joel and I will look at, and our staff will look at, what we can do to do an annual compliance check and adding that in. So, that is something we will have to talk to our staff about and see what we can do to move that forward. So, just want to let you know, we're gonna look at that. And then, to the gentleman that was talking about opioids, we just had, Joel and I just had our whole entire Human Services and Community Safety Committee meeting on Friday was all about opioids and fentanyl, and what's that done to the community, and what we can do moving forward and how that's affected us. We've also been working with the Tempe Coalition that is doing a lot with that issue in our schools. And unfortunately, they were started, that organization was started to look at opioids in high schools. A few years later, it dropped, then had to start working in middle schools, and now we're looking at, they're looking at elementary schools, which is really sad. So, we are looking at an August meeting where we're going to have an open forum for the community on opioids and the issues that are here in the community. It'll be Councilmember Navarro, myself, and Councilmember Hodge. So, just be looking for that to get some more information, and be glad to share that with you. If you want to reach out to either Joel or I, we'll make sure that you get that information because we do want to share it with as many people as we can. So, if we can get that information and you can share it with your friends, that would be helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, and thank you, Dorian. That was exactly what I was gonna say. August, before school starts, we're hitting it. We got a program going, so we're trying to get more information out, but it's not done. We got a ton more to do. So, I believe that. And thank you for your passion on that, too. And I just want to say to reflect Councilwoman Garland's points that she just made, working with staff, we want data. We want to make sure that we're seeing what we're doing is having an effect. So, we do need to have that enforcement. We do need to have those regular spot checks. So, those things are important to this whole structure of what we're doing because if going forward, it's almost like game day started today, all right? I can't, right now, we're worried about passing this and that. Game day started today, or when this actual vote goes down a couple weeks from now. That is the notice to say, we're now playing. And if the retailers are playing, they gotta play right. And we're trying to get our community to play in the right form and fashion, right? So, we need the information. We need the data. So, we're gonna work with making sure that this thing is structured to where we can capture some of that, so we have that good information going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Just a quick question for staff on my end. So, I know one of the things that we've talked about here this evening, and a lot of people brought up who came up, was about the notion of adding an annual compliance check-in into the actual ordinance that the council will be voting on. Do we feel that that will be able to be added before the council actually takes a final up or down vote? Because obviously, tonight is just for the purpose of recommending consensus for this to move forward for a formal vote. But do we feel like we're gonna have the ability to actually get that actual language into this document prior to the council taking an up or down vote?
Mayor, members of the council, we'll have to, as far as adding the language within the ordinance, that shouldn't take a lot of time, but we'll have to look at the operational impact of adding the compliance check first.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, and look, I actually understand and appreciate what people are saying. I mean, it's like, I know everyone here is, we are clearly committed to the issue, but at the same time, I understand the need to want to see that in the language to ensure that it's going to happen by ordinance. So, yeah, I would love to see that at the point that it comes back. I know we all would, frankly. So, but I appreciate the fact that we're moving forward with this. One of the biggest things for me is, well, I'm happy we're raising the age, too, is because I many times go into convenience stores in the city of Tempe, frankly, to get gas or to get other things, chewing gum, whatever it is. And many times, the people that I'm seeing purchasing tobacco products are clearly people who are far younger than me, and many of them look well under 21-years-old. And so, I think whatever we can do to try to find ways to dissuade people from getting addicted to whatever tobacco products they might be, I think is a very positive step in the right direction. Because most people just, I don't have the statistics on this, and I don't have the data, but I don't see a lot of people picking up smoking and vaping at the age of 27, or 28, or 29, or 30. If they're not picking it up while they're teenagers, they're probably not going to pick it up at all. So, I think whatever we can do to, number one, prevent that, and I think raising the age is a very positive step in trying to prevent that. I think that's a very positive thing. The other thing that I really like about this ordinance, though, is the conversation about being able to regulate the number of tobacco retailers here in the city of Tempe. I was definitely not aware when Mr. Yuhas talked about, I believe he's at 153 retailers are currently able to sell tobacco in a city that's only about 42 square miles, and that sounds incredibly high to me, frankly. So, and I'm saying I trust the number you're putting out, but I'm saying that's an incredible amount of concentration in one community. So, having the extra ability as a council and as a staff to regulate that, to ensure that when people come forward in the future, and they're talking about either opening up another convenience store, or another store, frankly, that's just simply selling tobacco, the fact that we will have the ability to have that flag to know, do we really need store number 154? So, I like the fact that the ability to enact this licensing ordinance will allow for us to have even more visibility on when other people are coming to us asking for licenses or the ability to operate or function within the city. Because I agree, 153 in a city of only 42 square miles with three incredible school districts, the Maricopa Community Colleges, headquarters, as well as Arizona State University, the largest public university in the country, I believe is way too much. I mean, they're here at this point, but I mean, but at the end of the day, do we really need to encourage more to come into the city of Tempe? So, I think this step of enacting this ordinance is clearly the right step, and I appreciate what Councilmembers Garland and Navarro did to bring this to us. And as they said, I know this is only sort of the first step in this conversation, and we're gonna be having other conversations moving forward about what we can continue to do to protect our youth in this community. So, I really, really greatly appreciate the work that's been done, and appreciate everyone who came up here tonight to share their thoughts and all of the community input that's happened nearly over the last two years. So, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience, I said, on council, I should say, additional comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you so much, everyone. Really appreciate everything. We are gonna then move back in the agenda to item 3A, Mill Avenue Streetscape, which is from University Drive to Rio Salado Parkway. And I see Shelley Seiler coming forward.
Good evening Mayor and Council. Shelley Seiler, the Interim Engineering and Transportation Director. And with me this evening is Jeff Velazquez and Kurt Monte.
Really quick, Shelley, I just want to make sure, because I'm sorry to interrupt. Couple of councilmembers asked me, just to make sure, Mr. City Manager, that we know, and I should have probably stated this more clearly, that we have consensus to move forward, council, on the previous item. It sounded like we clearly did. I should have gone around and asked. So, everyone good? Okay, great. Everyone's good. So, just for anyone still in the audience, we did have consensus to move forward with item 3C of putting that on a formal agenda for an up or down vote for council. So, thank you for flagging that for me. Shelley, sorry about that.
No problem. So, I introduced our consultants from J2 Design. This evening, they will be presenting concepts that focus on the hardscapes, sidewalks, and trees. At the end of the presentation, we would like to receive council feedback on if the alternatives are acceptable to receive. alternatives are acceptable to proceed to public input. I also wanted to highlight that there are going to be additional opportunities to provide input. We know that this is a priority project for the council and we are also continuing design as we work our way through some of these larger items that we really want to have the public input into. So the underground, electrical irrigation, those are all proceeding as we work our way through this. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and, actually, no, I'm not. I just wanted to highlight our council priorities. As you can see on the screen, this project really relates to several, including a feeling of safety in our neighborhoods, addressing ADA transition plan items, the 20-minute city tree coverage and capital investment. So at this point, I will be turning it over to Jeff.
Yeah. Thank you, Shelley.
Mayor Woods, members of the council, thanks for your time. We're excited about presenting these concepts and ideas to you and moving this project forward. We know it's a vital project here. For the agenda, we're going to be looking at project schedule, very brief overview. We'll look at hardscape and sidewalk concepts and then we'll look at street tree concepts. As Shelley had said in parentheses there, the input on some of those additional details, site furnishings and some of that art and detail will come later in the summer when we come back to you and work with you. In terms of schedule overview for the project, we were involved with the DCR report that was completed in September this past year. The design team was contracted in February. We had survey work out there in March and April done in the field. You saw probably some of the surveyors out there getting some of that data and grading and, and some of the, the field elements. Stakeholder, public and city council input will take place May, June and July of this summer. At the same time, conceptual design refinements will continue at that same timeframe. We'll be making adjustments as we get input from you and others. City council design approval will come in September and then final engineering will go from July to February of 2024. And construction, we're aiming for February 2024 and opening by the end of the year in February. For stakeholders and staff and team, the stakeholders, we have DTA, merchants and businesses, Arizona State University, Tempe Tourism. And for the boards and commissions, I won't name them all, they're there on display for you. We're working with, with many boards and commissions here in the city. And downtown neighbors and property owners, obviously, are vital stakeholders. And staff team, you can see all of the different team members and departments that we're working with and everybody's intimately involved in, in these decisions as this project goes forward. For the project area, I'm sure most of you are aware, right now, the design contract is for the Mill Avenue corridor from University Drive. There on the top left of the screen, across the match line north to Rio Salado Parkway. It is about a half mile of study all the way through there, working in the public realm of right of way, basically from building face to building face. And we will be working with adjacent side street projects like Fifth Street coming through and touching the Mill Avenue corridor. The long story short, we probably could present on 20 slides of this, but Tempe's culture and art, we think, is very vital to be implemented into the streetscape in various elements. And that can take place this summer as we get design and public input going. But we feel Tempe Artistry, ASU, the city's history, you know, music, artistry should be a part of this story and really create a sense of place that is unique and tells the story of Tempe. So we'll present five streetscape concepts to you briefly here. The first concept, one of five, streetscape concept one, shows a plan view, kind of looking down at a map. You have an example of Fourth Street on the left, Fifth Street on the right, and all five of these concepts that we'll show you. This shows a sidewalk zone here. And concept one really kind of focuses on what we're calling kind of a ribbon. Basically, we're kind of paying homage to Town Lake, to the water, and kind of using the existing brick that you have out on Mill Avenue now, repurposing that into a ribbon of pavement that you see there in the middle of the sidewalk zone. And utilizing that salvage brick, we think, is an important aspect because we want to pay tribute to what's been here before. At the same time, the brick has undergone testing and it's not as strong as like unit concrete pavers, but we think for sure we can get enough salvage brick to use and to implement into this concept. On the north and south at the street corners, we'll have exposed aggregate concrete paving. And then in addition to the brick, this concept implements lithocrete colored concrete paving into the street system. And then implementing lithomosaic tile accents where you see the circle there in the, kind of the middle of the streetscape, telling the story of Tempe in, in various, various ways. And then each concept that we show you, we're going to show five views of what that streetscape might look like. This is view one through five. Streetscape concept two is a similar ribbon pattern, but it inverts, we kind of reverse the materials, the main materials. Streetscape concept two uses more significant amount of existing brick. Depending on the, the status of the brick, some of them are kind of chipped and cracked over the years. Some of them are about 45 years old. We may need to import different types of brick to, to kind of assist, but we want to really focus on using the existing brick in this concept as well. This takes kind of a ribbon pattern that you see in kind of a three-tone unit paver, very strong concrete unit pavers. It would be an excellent subgrade beneath. We won't get into all that engineering now, but you will have a very good engineering implementation. Exposed aggregate would be the other main material that you see, kind of in that lighter gray. That would be kind of a rich concrete pavement that would occur at the corners, ADA improvements, of course. And then that kind of ribbon dances throughout the streetscape with some lithomosaic tile accent paving. And then here are the five views associated with concept two. Concept three of five is a simpler approach. We're focusing on really using the existing brick, re-implementing that into a better subgrade system and implementing that into the streetscape. And then probably supplementing that with some, some imported brick to really kind of round that out. At the corners, we're proposing concrete unit pavers and a color that would kind of tie in with some of the side street projects like Fifth Street. And it would probably be a three-tone system. We haven't picked those colors yet. We'll come back to you with, with those later in the, in the summer. But at the corners, we'd also implement probably a, a lithomosaic to kind of tell some of the story as well in terms of art, which you see in the plan view at the corners there. And these are the five views associated with concept three. Concept four of five uses a lot of the existing brick, salvage brick, probably importing some, some additional brick. But at the corners, we'll implement some sweeps of colored concrete lithocrete, paying homage to the lake and, and the Salt River. That would be a lithocrete colored system. And then at the corners, we would implement some of those iconic lithomosaic treatments as well. And the five views associated with concept four. Concept five takes kind of more of a rhythm pattern. So concept five, again, utilizes salvage brick, puts that back into the streetscape, but incorporates a, a concrete unit paver system that again ties in kind of with the side streets, like Fifth Street project coming in. And that kind of establishes a pattern with the street tree system as you, as you go down the, the boulevard. And these are the five views associated with concept five. So this is just kind of an enlargement of some of the materials rather than having a big board here in front of you. Lithocrete has been used pretty successfully. It's a colored lithium concrete system that is six inch in depth and would have a good subgrade, concrete unit pavers, four by eight pavers, lithomosaic, exposed aggregate and salvage Mill Avenue brick.
Just a really quick thing, and I don't want to interrupt the presentation, but I was just going to sort of get everyone's quick reaction to what they just saw about those five. For me personally, I don't, number five was the runaway winner from my perspective because I love the notion of something that I think really could be potentially timeless. I worry sometimes about integrating more of the colors into the streetscape because I worry that it might look great now, but 10 years from now, it might not wear as well over time. I also worry about the colors dulling a little bit. But I, but what I love is that the ability to have the concrete pavers that I think look very nice and very clean and very classy, but also incorporating a lot of the older brick into the design. So you're paying homage to the history of downtown Mill Avenue and when those were first installed. So from my perspective, that's sort of the, it's, it's a, it's a classy, timeless design that seems like it would be easy to maintain and something that would absolutely stand the test of time, even when it comes to just what people's tastes happen to be and what, because when we put these in, they might be there for the next 25 to 30 years. But I want something that if we're coming back for the, for the council in the year 2050, if they're looking at this, they could say, I can see why they made that decision and these still look good and I see why they made those choices. So. I know, I'd be, yeah, I'd be a lot older at that point. So, and I won't still be here, I can promise you that, too. Let me see, does anyone else see Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes. Couple of things. First of all, just going back to the timeframe, I really appreciate that you have a specific timeframe where we can get this done. That was part of my frustration previously, not having a timeframe or a very vague one. So thank you for providing that. Second of all, I think under the stakeholders, I think you should include the Tempe Chambers, Chamber of Commerce because of their, obviously, it's a lot of businesses affected. So I would like you to add that, those stakeholders. Third, the ADA, I just want to make sure that we're having very smooth surfaces for people that are physically challenged to be able to roll. Because a lot of times when they're rough, it really affects their spine. Like if it's a rough surface, like goes through them, like it vibrates through their body. So I just want to make sure that we're really, really cognizant of making sure that our physically challenged are okay on the sidewalks. Also, I don't like concept three, just for the, and then I do like concept four because of the, the water feature, how features, you know, the, the water, it gives that message of the river and, and our past. So I do like concept four and I could be talked into concept five, but I like four better. But thank you for such a great presentation on, in this section and I really, really appreciate it and really appreciate you putting a timeframe together. So thank you.
I was going to say, before I go to Councilmember Keating, somewhere Councilmember Arredondo Savage is watching this and going, I cannot believe that Cory actually picked the one with less color. So, because she knows exactly what I'm talking about. So, Councilmember Keating.
Well, I certainly hope Councilmember Arredondo Savage is not spending her time watching this meeting.
She will now after I just dropped her name.
You know, I, I really liked concept two and I did like concept four. I agree with the Vice Mayor. I did not like concept three. And, you know, I, I agree with the mayor. The, so the reason why I like concept two is because the colors are more muted to the mayor's point, that it is kind of a more timeless color scheme there. But, you know, so going into concept five, I was like, okay, probably two or four is kind of my pick. But I did appreciate the mayor's comments about the timeless look of concept five. I mean, my father will be the first to tell you his, his baby blue tuxedo when he got married in 1980, doesn't look good now, did not age well. Those pictures are pretty cringey to look at. But I, I do think, you know, to avoid that, a concept two, the Vice Mayor's point about concept four is good as well. So really, I'm, I'm pretty cool with anything except for concept one and concept three. The rest of them all look really good as far as I'm concerned. And I do appreciate you all taking the time to bring us a multitude of options on these. It, it's good work and I'm looking forward, forward to it being implemented and looking forward to kind of a, a new look Mill Avenue as we move towards the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. It was great to look at these at home and I moved back and forth a little bit. Actually, my first favorite was one because I liked, looked at the blue and I'm like, oh, it just looks cool. In the middle of summer, blue sure does look just nice and relaxing. But what I moved back to is, is two and five. And the reason why I like two and five is because there's less use of the brick. And I think one of the problems that we've had on Mill Avenue is that aging brick and the way that it gets on there. And if a tree grows underneath it or it gets cracked, it just, it's just, and it's not easy for girls, women to walk in heels on those things. So I just think the less amount of brick that we use from the salvaged one, the better it will be for us to be able to get around. And I know that that gray brick that you show on there, I can't remember what it's called, but that, I've seen that before. I know we've talked about that. That's much easier to get around on and you don't have to worry about those bricks cracking or moving. So I, I think the less amount of red brick you use, the better.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
And I'm all screwed up now.
I've been waiting for this one.
I mean, the concept five, I mean, I was almost like playing with this. It looks like a guitar fret. And maybe you can make a guitar fret out of it, kind of inspiring music, which, you know, consider that, I guess, maybe. I enjoyed five. Can we go back? I mean, one, actually, I, I liked one. If we can, I wish we had these like right next to each other.
We do, but they're at the end.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. Okay.
Is that one?
It's one, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the, so the question was with the lithocrete, how durable is that? How does it withstand, you know, the sun, the walking, that kind of stuff? I, you know, there's, there's that, you know, Disneyland has that concrete that's like, that's smooth concrete. It has color, you know, it just stays and it never fades or something. I don't, you know, you know what I'm saying?
It's an excellent question. Yeah. We've, we've used it in downtown Chandler. We did some of the redevelopment of Arizona Avenue downtown Chandler. The photo on the bottom right circle is from downtown Chandler. That's been in since the fall of 2010 and we were just walking it the other day. It's actually in pretty good condition. I would say it's held up really well over the decade, 11 years, 12 years.
Yeah. And, and personally, I like the brick, the red brick. It's, it's our history. I, I'm, I'm, I don't want less of it, maybe 50/50 of it, so to speak, because I think it's an important part of what Mill Avenue is in terms of, you know, milling around or, you know, walking on the bricks or whatever people might say to utilize. That's the character of what Mill has been. So utilizing that red brick and having that red brick is important. But I think to Councilmember Adams' point, I do want feedback from the shop owners. I do want feedback from the chamber, you know, on these designs also, not just our feedback, so to speak, but I think that's important. The other thing is, and maybe I'm ahead of myself as you're going to talk about it, is the tree planters. If, you know, well, two things. The brick absorbs, so water can, can seep in through, between the cracks. But also the, um, the street planters to where they're actually part of the, um, the, the water runoff on the, on the street, so to speak, to absorb that water. Do we have the ability? And maybe your guys are going to get there. But that's, I think, has been on the agenda of things to do and capture that water, so to speak. But I would probably say, you know, I was kind of leaning towards one. I do like five. And to be honest with you, there's one, I think it was three. Could we go to three?
Yes.
Mill around about this. It's like art, art, art.
Right, I know. I mean, three was not, was not bad itself. I know it kept more of the brick, which would probably be a, a less, a cheaper cost. But I like the fact that what you guys did at the end with the, with the other pavers and then also the decorative pieces of art of, you know, gin blossoms and utilizing our music and stuff in our past and our history. I think that was kind of cool. I kind of leaned towards three a little bit, but five, you know, like the frets, I kind of, maybe you can come back with one of the frets.
Good idea, actually.
Yeah. Or key. You could do one corner frets, another corner a key.
If it was toward music, you'd like it.
Yeah. Anyways, but that, yeah, just, just the input from the community and from, yeah, I think, I think really, I, I think this is really something that we could share with the community on a survey. You know, I think this is so attractable because so many people, no matter if they don't come down here, they've been part of the history. I think it's important to kind of get that gauge, too. I know it might be a lot more work, but thank you.
Councilmember Chin?
Sure, why not? Question. I thought brick was an issue. Wasn't that posing a challenge?
Are you speaking in term, sorry, Councilmember Chin, are you speaking in terms of salvaging the brick or from what?[1746.04] the brick or from what?
Durability and safety.
It's a very good, very good question. So, yeah, we've done some testing of the existing brick in terms of pounds per square inch, PSI testing, and it's testing at about 4,000 to 5,000 pounds per square inch. That's the circle on the left there, existing brick. The ones on the right, unit pavers, tested about really 10,000 PSI and they rate them from like 8,500 to 10,000. So, they're pretty, very, very strong. So, the brick isn't as strong as that, obviously. It is a little more worn. I think we'll have to do, you know, with a contractor, we'll have to do some additional testing. We wouldn't put it back in if it wasn't safe. We're working with your engineering group and there will be a very good subgrade, you know, of slurry and it'll be engineered below the sidewalk, so it'll be an excellent paving system. But, yeah, that is one of the items we're gonna have to go up against is high heels and the walkability of things and making sure that the implementation is very good, excellent when it gets back put in.
Absolutely. Safety is important, but also durability, right? We're going to be spending a good amount of money redoing this. I'd like something that can take the traffic, literally, the foot traffic. If I had to pick, I'm going with the much cleaner number 5 because I think it, I think it seemed cleaner. And the red brick, I understand, and I agree with Councilmember Navarro, normally I love red brick, but if we're trying to build a sidewalk that's sustainable and safe for everyone, is that the best choice? I leave it to you. That's my question and that's what I'll continue to ask. I like those litho mosaics, but how could you combine that with, let's say, a Concept 5? Where could you do that somewhere? So, mine's somewhere in between. But I guess my question was, I thought originally we were trying to move away from some of that brick because it was not something that could last and it was an issue and it would take constant maintenance and it wouldn't look fresh for as long as some of the other options, maybe? Those are just my questions.
Yeah.
Just for consideration.
Yeah, we would, there's a chance that we may have to implement some new brick into the streetscape by, with the use of salvage existing brick to get that look, depending on the brick-by-brick implementation of this whole thing. So, it will be probably an elaborate study, engineering-wise, to see what can go back down.
So, is there an option of if, if people wanted that red brick look, that you do sort of the stamped concrete effect of that?
You know, we looked at a few things, Councilmember. One of the things is using actually concrete unit pavers potentially that look fairly identical to brick and we have some samples of that on the team that we've been looking at. So, there is that possibility and then you're putting in an 8,000 or 9,000 PSI strength. It's just not the original brick re-implemented. It would probably look the same, but that's always an option to mock that up. We've been talking about doing some constructed mockups.
Well, I wonder if there's a way to use some of the salvaged original brick, right? In some other art type of installation somewhere else on Mill. I don't know how. I leave it to more creative brains to figure it out.
Certainly a possibility, yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, I'm gonna go in the order that people kind of got my attention, I'm gonna start with Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. I guess if we do do a survey, I don't want it to be a long survey because our downtown needs help yesterday and we've been pushing, especially Councilmember Navarro and I have been pushing this about the downtown and we really want to get it done. I know the rest of the council is also in favor of pushing it, too, now. But I just, I'm good with a survey, but just a quick one. And when we talk about the brick, is it a different application that we'd be using for install as opposed to the previous install of the brick?
One of the things that we'd really like to do is to put a concrete slurry leveling course. We've done that in some other downtowns around the valley and the paving systems have gone in really well. Coupled with that, as Councilmember Navarro had said, rainwater harvesting and working with Richard Atkins on staff on some of the silva cell systems to really get an excellent root structure for what we put back in green-wise would be important. So, we would plan to do a very good subgrade system to make sure whatever's put in here on the paving, hopefully, outlasts all of our lifetimes.
And the bricks wouldn't fall apart, because a lot of times when I'm walking on Mill Avenue, there's missing bricks. So, would they be more likely to not be missing with this application that you're talking about?
With the new, with the new streetscape, yes, it would be, yeah, we would plan to have everything looking brand new, essentially.
But what would be the life expectancy on the brick?
Boy, that's an excellent question. We'd probably have to do a little more engineering on that and get you an answer on that. Brick isn't durable material, I mean, it's an excellent building material, it's just not quite as strong as the unit pavers, so we can get you a life expectancy and get that back.
Okay, because I think that would be helpful, because we're gonna be having this for a long time and so I just want to, I think that would be helpful and know about it. Okay, thank you. I really like that we have these different proposals and all of my colleagues, all of our different opinions, so that's always good, the value of diversity. And, so, thank you very much.
Sounds good, thank you. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. So, the two questions is, is the infrastructure underneath, if we're doing a whole new paving of the bricks or whatever plan we come up with, what type of infrastructure are we gonna do underneath? Water, electrical? And are we gonna do that in key? I mean, obviously, we got, you know, the Christmas parades and whatnot, how are we planning for that? And do you think this concept of whatever pattern we go to has the ability to help with maintenance costs, to lower the maintenance costs? So, we're not ripping up something and then having to come back with new material. I would think with bricks, we can rip them up and just put the bricks right back. So, those are two things that, you know, to plan on that. The other thing is, I tend not to want to move away from the original bricks. I desperately want the original bricks in some way or fashion. I do understand that they might have wear and tear on them. I'm hoping we have a surplus that we can utilize to replace them and obviously, I'm probably have to replace eventually with newer bricks. But if, even like a Concept 5, I'm not saying Concept 5 is the winner, but it's, it does have the ability to like, yeah, you're not really using a lot of the original bricks and we could probably replace these bricks as time goes by. So, it's, I think we have ability to, I understand the strength of the bricks, but still, it's a strong brick. But at the same time, I think that what I've been hearing, especially talking on Mill, is people wanting the bricks and not losing the bricks because that's so much of our history. So, I tend to be cautious about possibly using something different. That's my opinion. But the infrastructure, though, if that's something that's planned in, in that area, is there any concept of that?
You wanna take the infrastructure part, or you want me to take it? Okay. Yes, yeah, the answer is yes. So, we're actually just starting to get ready to meet with DTA and some of the stakeholders on festivals, infrastructure, water, electrical, how all that can be improved to make the streetscape work into the future. And then certainly, all the utilities are being evaluated with city staff and with our engineering team as well. So, yes, the infrastructure will be upgraded where it needs to be.
And that's cool. And I just hope we think of these things, and I have no idea, you know, sometimes we do concerts on the street, sometimes we do, well, obviously, we do the Arts Festival on the street and then the second Sundays. So, with those vendors, you know, did they complain of, you know, I wish we had a plug-in here, you know, that kind of stuff? So, having adequate, you know, abilities to forecast on the needs down the road, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's a high priority in 100 amp or 50 amp panels, whatever it is to make it convenient and sightly, you know, it looks good, that's a priority.
Cool, thank you.
I'm gonna go to Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Keating, but really quickly as well, one of the things we're gonna need to do, Council, before we finish, is narrow this list down from five choices to three choices so we can prepare for the public input. So, I will kind of go around before we wrap up and then we go, we still also have the conversation about trees coming up as well. So, but I'm gonna go to Councilmember Garland first.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just what I was talking about, about the brick and how hard it is to walk on there, the picture that you guys have on the screen, which is really interesting, there are 10 cracks that have holes in this picture that you have. I just counted them, there's 10. There's 10 issues where my heel would, I know it's character, but my heel would get stuck in there, I would fall with your character. But one of the things I was looking, thinking when I was looking at this is, you know what, if using that brick, you could look at, using it on the band of the sidewalk instead of in the center where people are actually walking, because then you could still be, and I'm, no, I'm saying this and it's gonna be, I don't want you to have to change all your drawings, but if we just think about that, if that brick is something that we do want to hold on to, if you put it on the outsides where people, most people are gonna be walking in the middle, then you don't have to worry about it cracking or breaking or anything like that and you could still use it. But, anyway, just a thought. I know we have to narrow it down from there, but, sorry.
This is all good input. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm not sure we've ever had an issue where we're all kind of in different places on this, you know, where it's, so good luck figuring out whatever the consensus happens to be, because I don't know.
I got a list here.
Okay, okay. So, you know, I agree with Councilmember Navarro, my preference would be to keep in some way the original brick. I don't think Councilmember Chin's idea of some sort of art installation is a bad one if that's the road we have to go down. My preference would be for it to be on the walkway, but, you know, I do think that Councilmember Garland and Vice Mayor Adams do have a point. I don't, not worried about durability, right? I mean, we got Tempe hardware buildings built 150 years ago and still standing, so I'm not worried like the bricks are like gonna break under the pressure of somebody walking or riding a bike or whatever scooter. But, maybe there's a way we could seal these up a little bit better. When I used to work for ASU, I'd often take scooters to and from campus to City Hall and, yeah, you would hit a loose brick, you know, and it was, I never fell, thankfully, but definitely had some close calls. So, if there's a way that we could address those concerns in keeping the original additional sealant filling in the cracks and the holes, because she's right, I mean, you look at those and you can see some holes there, that'd be my preference to go, because I do like the idea of keeping the original brick, Tempe's a city that values its history. So, yeah, but again, if we can't, if it's, then certainly some sort of public art installation incorporating some of that brick would be important to me, too. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Sounds good. Here's what I'm gonna do, just to kind of give everybody a little drama here with the audience, for those watching at home and for those sitting here. If we can quickly cycle back with, through 1 through 5, just so people have a chance to take a quick look at all the different angles and then just do me a favor, Council, and just mark down your top three choices, then I will call upon everyone and we'll take a little roll.
You want the honor?
At the end, if you go, at the end.
At the very end, okay.
You want us to scroll through?
Um, okay.
This is it, so, yeah, this is it. So, I guess, the end has them all together.
Yeah. If we want to go to the, yeah.
It's also on your, yeah.
Yep.
So, can we go to that other thing?
You can manually do it yourself, too, because I think it'll be troublesome if they handle it.
Okay. Okay, then maybe, so then maybe if we, if we just go to the screen then and start, and let's just start with 1 and kind of go through and show, somebody wants to take a look at their screen, the current screen? Yep.
Can I say something about, let me say something about 1, because looking at, and just hearing the discussion, if you think about it, 1 actually utilizes the bricks in that waveform, the original bricks. And if I'm looking at the picture from the long view of it, it seems like that kind of goes in and out and not too much in the pathway where if your high heels get, maybe we have a sign saying no high heels.
I am, I am not touching that one.
It's all about safety.
At all.
Listen, we hit tobacco, why not no high heels? I mean, come on.
Delicious Coke Zero.
But, I think that, that actually has, you know, the original, but it seems to be doable if done right. And here's the other side to it, is every corner, is every block gonna be this design? Or does every block have like one of the designs? Because this could take forever.
The intent, Mr. Councilmember, would that this streetscape view that you see here would be implemented throughout the street?
Throughout the whole thing.
From University to Real Slade.
Or how about the east side, west side, make it, change it up a little bit? I'm just saying. Throw it out to you guys.
Take a batch, Charles.
Okay, anyways, but I just want to say, I think Concept 1, it, I actually did like it. I mean, it really did, it kind of, it passed in and passed out with the red brick, so it's not so cumbersome, but, I'm sorry, am I going, Mayor? Do you want me to just do it?
Well, I was gonna ask, yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody can see the concepts and I want to get everyone's top three and I'm just gonna do some hash marks and we're gonna do this very democratically, so. And I should say, too, like, when voting in council elections, you can vote for up to three, but not necessarily three if you don't want to. So, Councilmember, you want to go ahead and go, or?
I will put 1 out there, I like 5.
Okay, 1, 5.
And actually, 3.
3. I'll go next here, I will also vote for 1, 3, and 5, identical to Councilmember Navarro. All right, I know, I know, I'm very unoriginal up here. Anyone else want to weigh in? Vice Mayor Adams.
Can I put two votes on 1 if I?
No, that's not fair. Single shot, single shot.
I would go with 4 and 5 and I'm okay with 1, too, so.
1, 4, 5, okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Garland.
So, I'll do 1, 1 and 5, just 1 and 5.
Just 1 and 5.
I don't really like the other ones.
Okay. All right, let's see who's next, Councilmember Chin or Councilmember Keating? Councilmember Chin.
5 and 3.
All right, now, Councilmember Keating.
You know, I made fun of the blue tuxedo, but I do like the blue in the original brick of 1. Shoot, man, this is tough. Definitely 4 and 5. And, I don't know, we'll have to go with 1.
All right, so, that means the, so number 5 has 6 votes, which is the top vote getter. Number 1 has 5 votes and number 3 has 3 votes, which means numbers 2 and 4 are therefore eliminated.
Should we present that with a brick on the way out?
Councilmember, oh, no, she's not here, so.
Yes.
How's that?
Thank you for narrowing that down and we have a great team.
I'm here to help.
So, we'll go back and look at how we can safely incorporate existing brick into the concepts and we'll be back to show you guys what we have.
Perfect.
But, we're not done yet.
Are we onto trees next?
We do, we are on trees.
Ah, here it is.
We do have the right shirt on.
Here it is. We'll back up over here. Yes, Vice Mayor Adams?
Just a suggestion, since we do have a clear winner, should we just go with that?
Well, we have to do 3 for the purpose of actually sending it out to the public for the survey, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's survey the audience right now. No, I'm just kidding.
One quick question I should ask before we move on, and I apologize for asking this now, there's been a lot of conversation about cool pavement. Is there any of that kind of incorporated into any of those designs? Not throw a wrench into things, but I know we're talking about sustainability, so, cool pavement?
Cool pavement?
Yes.
Yes, we are planning, that would probably occur at crosswalks if that's used. We've implemented that, there's a Tempe company that does that here locally, that you can implement that. We'd have to work with engineering, they're in the concepts in the DCR, but that can lower, like stamped asphalt, that can lower summer temperatures by 20, 22 degrees, it's pretty interesting pavement. We aren't into that level of design yet in the intersection and such, we're focusing on sidewalks and trees right now, but that is something that has been talked about and is in the DCR.
Sounds good. Councilmember Chin.
If anyone recalls at their last or last few Sustainability and Economic Vitality council committees, we've explored, per Vice Mayor Adams' request, some information about cool pavement. So, some city staff has, they've done some research. The challenge will be, and you'll discover this, and I defer to the experts, it's still relatively new and it may not be in good, in high-density areas with a lot of traffic and a lot of reflection of light. That may be bad for cool pavement right now. So, check it out. I'll let you discover it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams? Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I've, uh, done more research on the cool pavement, and, uh, I think we might have a product, they've improved them a lot. So I'd like to work with staff and just, um, talk to you guys about that, uh, whenever we can. And we, maybe we'll have another presentation at the Economic Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee on it, just because they're improving it super fast. So, thank you very much.
Sounds good. All right, with no further ado, onto the trees.
Yeah, to get into the trees, so this slide here talks about, a little bit shows the, the subgrade tree planting system that we're, we're trying to implement, working with Richard Atkins and urban forestry and the engineering staff. This is a green infrastructure project, project, product. And what we would like to do is to drain stormwater into these Silva Cell units, they're recycled high-density plastic structural product that can actually hold up parking zones on asphalt, and they can actually hold up sidewalk zones, as you see in the section here. So everything that you see in blue on the plan view graphic of the concept there on the map, uh, we would like to implement in, uh, in an engineered fashion about three feet deep. That would be an enhanced soil system for the trees that go in, and that would allow roots to grow in a really healthy manner that traditionally has not been able to be done in urban areas throughout the nation, throughout the world. This has come online probably over the last 15 years, pretty strong, has been used in some urban areas around the country to, to great effect. So we're working on this right now, we'd like to, there's no guarantee that it'll be implemented underneath those parking stalls as shown, but we'd like to, to work with your engineering staff to, to try to make that work. But certainly between the tree planting areas, we would like to use this Silva Cell system.
Okay.
So trees. We're gonna show you photos of five trees that are being proposed to be used on Mill Avenue corridor. The first you're familiar with, this is out there already, ficus, the Indian laurel tree, evergreen tree. The tipu, we'd like to implement in certain aspects, um, kind of a, a shared street tree system. This is a semi-evergreen, loses its leaves a little bit, has a little bit of flowering, but a nice shade tree. Um, the eucalyptus papuana is a ghost gum, pretty hardy eucalyptus, evergreen, has a nice look, vertical tree, it would just be a small accent in quantities. Uh, the fruitless olive, the Swan Hill olive is something we like to use in small quantities, and potentially the mastic tree, this is a photo from downtown Chandler, is a Washington Street, street tree system, smaller version of a pistachio, but this is an evergreen pistachio. This does not lose its leaf.
Councilmember Navarro?
Real quick question on that tree right there. Is that the same tree that runs down Fifth, or maybe on the corner of Fifth, or all the way down Fifth going past to, uh, Ash?
Boy, I don't know that.
It's on the side.
Kurt knows all things Tempe, D.
Is that what it is?
Mr. City Manager?
I think it's, it's been referred to in the past as the Chinese pistachio.
Oh, okay.
Is that a different tree than this?
Chinese red push. Okay, Chinese red push, that's, that loses its leaves. No, this is an evergreen, smaller pistachio. Yes, sir.
Can I say, I do not like that tree. Sorry to offend tree people, but it's not really a hardy tree in the, at least in this setting.
Okay. It's not this.
Okay.
Okay.
I want to.
Thank you. So, concept one, we have three concepts of street tree systems that we want to present to you right now. So concept one takes a primary street tree, introduces 50% tipu, you see on the right side there, and 50% ficus. And what we're trying to do here, working with staff, is create some diversity, not only for aesthetics and tree health and the aesthetics of the street, street tree system, but if you ever have disease, if you ever have, um, you know, weevils or whatever it is coming in, I think you haven't really had that so far to date, but with the pandemic that showed us, you know, a different variety of health in, in terms of humans, but trees do go through that too. And so I think we're trying to get some street tree diversity here. Um, this shows a 50% mix between, um, ficus and tipu with median and small quantity accent trees of the ghost gum and the mastic tree, or the, the evergreen pistachio that you just saw. That's one. Concept two takes a higher percentage of the tipu. We don't have a street tree planting yet, we're working on that, but this would be 70% of the tipu, 30% of the ficus, with small numbers of median and accent trees of the evergreen pistachio, the mastic, and the fruitless olive implemented. Street tree three, concept, would be a higher percentage of the ficus, 70%, and 30% of the tipu, kind of reversed, with median and accent trees of the ghost gum and fruitless olive appearing, you know, in smaller numbers throughout the corridor. I think those are the street, the three concepts.
Councilmember Keating?
I'll say, uh, you know, I made a disparaging comment about the ghost gum tree in your initial slide. That tree's looking rough, but in these slides down here, it looks, looks like a very nice tree. So I don't know if that one, the one that is like diseased or whatever, but anyway, I, I like concept three quite a bit.
Okay.
I, I like, I want, you know, as much shade and canopy coverage as we can get in our downtown area. Um, so concept three to have, you know, ficus be the, you know, the main driver, and ficus and the Indian laurel, the two that are gonna produce the most canopy coverage be the main driver, I think is important. Um, so, yeah, I, I certainly, I mean, all these trees look great, um, but concept three to me, it would be my preference. My first choice. Thank you.
Sounds good. Let me go to Councilmember Navarro, then Vice Mayor Adams.
So, uh, first question though, before I get into that, is, man, I just, I don't really care for the olive tree, I'm just gonna tell you that, just the history of it around my whole entire life, I just, anyways, I'm sorry to offend, but that's just my, so, but the tipu, uh, how, is that like a fast-growing tree? Is that, it compares to the ficus?
I see Richard nodding at the back, yeah.
Want to wait on that, Richard?
It's a little bit faster growing than the ficus.
Okay.
Pretty moderate growing tree.
And, and I, and I enjoyed the picture of what it looks all trimmed up in that, you know, uh, concept one, uh, bottom picture, I guess, it, it looks really sharp when it's in that state. I just don't know if it was our weather, it looks like a California picture. We'll, uh, we'll make it that way, but I, I do appreciate that. Um, I, I think for sure I would, I would go to concept three. I would have as much, uh, of the pistachio, or I'm sorry, pistachio, the ficus as possible, especially the ones that are just so well-rooted right now. Um, and how, but, but my, I guess is this gonna come back with, what's the pattern gonna look like?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then we were talking about medians too, we're not talking about just the, okay. Um, yeah, that would be, that would be my goal, and I, I tend, just so you guys know, I tend towards that too, because of the things that we do on the street, the festivals and stuff, in fact, when we, like the second Sunday, I was at the latest, or the last second Sunday, it's just the shade. And I noticed that, you know, people walk in, they're staying within the shade of the trees, you know, and then they'll come out. And, and, and to be honest with you, is, is if the medians can provide that kind of shade that blends in to make it even shadier, I mean, that's what we strive for. And, and I know we do these things in the wintertime, it's a little bit cooler, but we also have the advantage of pushing it too, if we have that canopy. Um, so that's why I kind of tend towards that lushness. And to be honest with you, it's just, it's the character of Mill Avenue. It's been the character, it's been a different tree, I know we live in a desert, I know we do, but for this small quarter of a mile stretch, or, or maybe less or more, I don't know, I just think that doing it right, having that lushness is strategic for economic, what we're doing in terms of tourism and travel and everything like that. So that's why I'm, I'm gonna push that way. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Garland?
Yes, uh, I like concept three. I think we're close to a consensus on this, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, and the, the more trees we can have, um, both in the median and on the sides, the better. We need, as part of our sustainability efforts, we're trying to get more trees in here, and why not the downtown? And I think it will really make it look a lot, uh, more user-friendly and more welcoming with the, uh, the increased trees. And I just, you know, this will help lower our temperatures. So we need to really be mindful of trying to lower temperatures with the, um, with our sustainability practices. So the more trees, the better. And I do like the ficus, too, Joel, just for the record, I like them.
Quick thing, Shelley, before I go to, uh, Councilmember Garland, uh, are there, are we trying to, like with the pavement treatments, are we trying to narrow these down at all? There are only three concepts, are we planning on going with the survey with all three concepts? Or are we narrowing it down to two, or what's the preference?
Mayor, Council, it's really what the council desires in terms of us bringing the concepts forward. I would say three concepts is not like an overwhelming amount for really the public to weigh in on, so it doesn't necessarily mean that we need to narrow them down. We're happy to bring all three concepts forward, should the council desire.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll see where we all, where we land, because, you know, three people have gone and three people still to go, and we'll see where we might only land on one or two. So, uh, let's see, can I go to Councilmember Garland?
I, I guess my question, I have some questions before I can tell you which I'd like here. I mean, one of the things I want to make sure is that none of these trees, like the olive tree's not gonna drop olives, like you won't see, and the, the other trees won't be dropping big seeds or anything like that, that are gonna cause a maintenance or a slipping or tripping or anything.
Yeah, Councilmember, these are, these are pretty, pretty bulletproof, um, yeah, trees that are, that are, you know, pretty clean. The olive is a fruitless olive, so we can't plant, um, the old olive that has the allergy dust and, and the oliv, so this would not be fruiting at all, guaranteed.
Um, the other one, the other question then is, which one of these concepts uses the least amount of water? Because, I mean, one of the things that, yeah, um, Vice Mayor Adams was saying about, you know, sustainability, I mean, we do want shade, but we have it, we have a big concern with water, and I think that we need to be responsible with that. So I think looking at which one of these, um, would use the least amount of water to produce some shade, I think is something we need to be paying attention to. And then also the care and maintenance of this, because, um, I'm sure, um, that Richard Atkins can tell you how many trees in the city of Tempe that he and a very small army are responsible for, just kidding, there's no army, are responsible for carrying and trimming in these trees. So I'm just curious what the maintenance will be. Um, and I did get Joel a shirt, I cannot believe he's not wearing it, that says save the ficus on Mill, so I can't believe he's not wearing it.
I was disappointed myself.
Councilmember Garland, can you answer the question?
Yes, please.
Um, so, um, in terms of maintenance, I think we've all selected the, the tree species that would probably be the least amount of maintenance through this corridor. I think it's something that our team and, and Richard has been committed to, trying to, to limit maintenance and things blowing over and monsoons and such. Um, so I think to your second question, in terms of water use, concept two with the tipu, it's a little more desert-adaptive tree, even though it's not from the Sonoran Desert, um, it does use less water than the ficus. So that's why this concept's on there in the event that this conversation went into a sustainability water use topic. So we do have concept two in here as a lower water use, water intensity concept.
Okay, so I, I would then say, I'm, I would be concept two. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Um, I, okay, I, I can, I can, can I, uh, see concept one again as well? So, uh, I'll be quick, uh, my vote for concept one. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I like trees. I'm not an expert at all on trees. I can tell you what kind of cheese you should eat, but I can't tell you what kind of trees to pick. I defer to Richard Atkins. Um, uh, here's what I can share with you, what I want. I want shade, I want durability, I want adaptability, and I want sustainability. And then you tell me what trees fit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, since I, I know Richard's being, your name is being invoked several times, is that, do you want to, uh, address what Councilmember Chin raised about kind of what you might recommend when it comes to the questions that she posed?
But you can't influence us.
I was thinking, Richard is not gonna be able to get off the hook this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I actually anticipated most of this, and I worked with Jeff on most of these issues when we were putting these pallets together. The first question was asked was the least water usage. That would be the least amount of ficus, with all due respect. Ficus is a good tree. It will work well on Mill Avenue. It does use a lot of water. So that's why we still have it in here in different capacities. Um, the most sustainable, maintenance-free is probably the mix of 50/50.
So it's option one?
Yes.
Go ahead. That's part of why I picked that one.
Um, the, the tipu trees, only, all these trees were selected basically because they would be mostly evergreen, and they have less mess and debris. The tipu is about the only one that's gonna provide the debris because it has the yellow flowers. But the yellow flowers are quite exquisite when it does flower.
Yeah.
Um, very little leaf drop, but the yellow flowers are there. The ficus, you have the little berries that do fall from now and then. Um, the fruitless olive, which was one of my big choices, just because it's a very sustainable tree for Tempe, because it really is very, very low maintenance. It is very low water use. It has absolutely no mess. It's a very strong-looking tree. We are putting it in other places, but nonetheless, and I understand. Um, the mastic tree, we have one right now at the corner in front of Urban Outfitters that I planted three and a half years ago, um, that has still actually survived after being run over by three skateboards, two bicycles, but it's still there. And it, it is evergreen, no mess, little bit higher maintenance, but it holds form quite well. So that's why these species came, and the ghost gum, because it will work with signage quite well. You asked about the design. Basically, that's gonna be where, how we look at the buildings and the signage of which tree is gonna go where, because that's very important to the business owners.
Chart.
And it's a very nice tree, and it's more columnar, and it's a little bit open, it is evergreen, very little mess, but all of those together will work with signage with the businesses, as well as provide shade, be sustainable together, and offer lower water use.
Quick thing I was gonna ask to, actually, I'll go to Councilmember Navarro, then Councilmember Chin, but I was gonna just say as a note that I'm, uh, taking up here, uh, we have three votes for concept three, one vote for concept two.
I'm gonna move to one with his recommendation.
All right, then that changes that. I think I have consensus, but I'll, I'll go to Councilmember Navarro then, and I'll go back. Nothing? Okay.
No, I, I was just, and I get the water usage, and, I'm sorry. And I get the water usage, and I, and I've, I've probably told my councilors many times before, it's, it's just, this is our downtown area, this is the small strip, this is the stuff that we do, and, and we've had discussions, I thought this years ago too, um, just that, yeah, we know we're gonna be using a little bit more water, but collectively, when I look at the strip and then I look at the city in general, and what everyone has, there's water usage everywhere. We're trying to improve our canopy even more so everywhere in streets and right-of-ways. I, I don't think that this strip is the thing that's going to lower everybody's water rates or water in general. I, that, I know that it's very visual, and we're making, we can make a stand on it, I just don't think this is the place to make the stand on. Um, personally, I think this is the place to make sure that we do a concept that's lush, that brings in a canopy, that has a great shade. I enjoy the ficus because it's, especially the ones that are in front of, uh, uh, between Fourth, or I'm sorry, Seventh and, 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 or Sixth and Seventh, they have, look like they've rooted very well, um, they've been there for years. I know that we probably have some other areas that need some help. I kind of wonder if sometimes we turn off the hose and try to see if we can change out, I'm just having these things in my mind, it's just me. Okay? But, um, that's why I think that the, the concept three, just having that more lush, that more, um, canopy, I think, like I said, it, it has values to our, um, open street fairs and things like that. Um, that's my push, uh, and, you know, I leave it at that.
Sounds good. I just got one quick thing, and I want to go to Councilmember Garland as well, so I just wanted to say, you know, we've definitely, we've definitely got consensus, we're going to just eliminate one option. Uh, we would then eliminate option number two. Uh, so then options, uh, concept one and concept three would both move forward, so residents would have an opportunity, uh, to weigh in. But yeah, my, my quick thing is, the reason why I picked number one was I thought it was sort of, sort of the same thought process behind the, um, the street treatment, was that I thought it was a nice blend of, in one sense, keeping 50% of the ficus, which it was a nice blend of, in one sense, keeping 50% of the ficus, which is the tree that a lot of people associate with Mill Avenue, so it's paying homage to the history of downtown Mill. But at the same time, I like the tipu tree, because I also think that it's a lot more water-friendly, and sort of living through some of the times we're currently living in with a lack of overall water in the desert, and just trying to be more mindful. But it probably also was my, growing up in the East Coast, of the notion of having really, having an autumn, and having trees, flowers, and leaves kind of fall during the fall. And I, so I think that while it might be a little bit more challenging to clean up with some of those leaves actually flowering, I find it to be beautiful, and it adds a pop of color in the downtown in a very natural way, without using artificial lights, you're just using trees. And so I think that it's a really good blend between the two of, you know, really paying homage to the past, but also bringing in a new, much more water-friendly tree, and adding a lot more natural color in the sort of flowering leaves, I think is a really nice blend between the two. Councilmember Garland, then Councilmember Chin?
I just have a question to make sure that Councilmember Navarro is not gonna chain himself to any of the trees on Mill Avenue. Are the trees that are there right now gonna stay, and we're just gonna take care of them? They're gonna stay on Mill?
That's kind of in part of the design evaluation here. I think if they're healthy, I think the discussion has been potentially try to keep and salvage those in place, because it's a free tree, it's a lot of shade. I think part of that is gonna be lifespan and consulting with Richard, and is it near the end of its life, should we be taking it down if it's perfectly healthy? That's a tough thing to do. So I think all of those tough choices were not there yet.
Okay.
But I think there's value to having a great tree if it's healthy and in the middle of its life.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go to Councilmember Keating, then Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I do agree with your comments about the changing of the colors, and some of my neighbors have this tree, and it does drop a bunch of yellow petals everywhere. But honestly, it looks beautiful. And they're only there for like a week, and then they're gone. And so I think, I think that would be a cool accent. I have a process question. So we're putting the streetscape to a public survey, we're putting the trees to a public survey. Is that the decision-maker, then, the public survey? Or is that just another data point to come back to us to make a final decision?
I would say that it's definitely a data point, in terms of just wanting to know, generally speaking. And of course, it depends on how many residents respond to the community survey, but at the end of the day, you know, the council has the final decision, but I think we all wanna make sure that we're being informed by, you know, the community being able to weigh in. It's their downtown, and it'll be there for the next 25 to 30 years. So I think having the input would be exceptionally valuable as we kind of grapple with this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just how long a timeframe are we talking about as far as the survey? Because our downtown, it looks so bad right now. I just wondering, I wanna do the survey, because I'm all about inclusion, but I just wondering what the timeframe of the survey would be.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Adams, Council. So we do have the public input over the next two months, so June and July. We are scheduled to come back to you in September to make that final decision with the input of the public, businesses, and chamber, and everyone else. We can see about moving that up. Again, I want to emphasize that while these are critical elements of the project, they are not going to delay this process in moving forward. We're already working on much of the infrastructure. We've been working with Richard and the, yeah, the team. So that won't necessarily delay it, but if it's the desire of the council, we can try and bring back more of that information in August. I don't recall offhand what the council's schedule is for work-study, but we're scheduled for September at this time.
Okay. But September's fine, as long as you're doing other things too, to keep improvement. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Navarro?
Just a real quick question, I lost my other one, but you were talking about saving trees and what, we're still coordinating, we're still designing. It's not just, well, this one's, we're gonna replace it with this one. We're not just doing random placements, and there will be a design concept.
Yes, it is gonna be a, yeah, well-thought-out design, it'll be strategic, and we'll make aesthetics a big part of how it all flows together. Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. So it sounds like we've got consensus on the tree item. Anything else?
I think that was it.
All right.
What we were looking for, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Glad, thank you. Wonderful, thank you. Appreciate it. And that brings us to Item 3B, park monument signs. I see Craig and Alex coming forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Craig Hayden, Community Services Director, joined by Alex Jovanovic, Deputy Community Services Director with Parks and Recreation. We appreciate the opportunity to provide an update today on park monument signs. We're also seeking input and direction on our recommendations that we provided within the packet. So we didn't include a slide on the performance measure, but we are gonna frame our conversation around Quality Life Performance Measure 3.16, which is how our community gauges the quality of the spaces that we manage within Community Services, knowing that our parks and recreation systems are a key component of that. So we're headed in the next 10 minutes is, or so, would be, I'll provide the background information on our existing park signage that led to the effort that we're currently in, the public input, some considerations that came out of that public input, and then our recommendations. I'll turn it over to Alex for that. And certainly, we have time for questions at the end, but we'll be happy to pause at any point along the process to answer any questions that you may have. So with that, we have, you may be well aware that we have 58, maybe not the number specifically, but we have 58 current concrete monument signs that are within our park system. They've been out in some form or fashion over the past 40 years, so we've been using them for a period of time. We do consider these park monument signs made of concrete, aggregate concrete, as you can see here, as parked assets. With that, they get installed, we have to maintain them, and then at some point, we do have to replace them as parked assets. We know that out of the 58, that they vary in age and condition, and with that, we are going to be providing an overview of what we believe is what the future of the park monument signs could and should look like as staff. We also, we'll show a little bit of a discrepancy in numbers. We have 58 signs, and if you do the math on the next sign, on the next page, we've got 55 signs. So we have three that will need to be replaced, not because of their condition, but because we have renamed three parks. So that is really driving, not an immediacy to the process, but it is a compounding factor in the need for us to replace some park signs, not just based on condition. So our staff has been out to the 58 different park signage. We looked at the 55, we have broken them down into three categories. Poor condition, about a third of our existing signs are in poor condition, where we see in the picture on the right, Frescalante, it's got significant cracks, repairs aren't really gonna extend the useful life. We believe these should be replaced in the next five years. A larger percentage of the existing signs, 24, which is just under 50%, are in the fair condition rating, so they have some minor cracking. With some repairs, we believe that we can extend the useful life to around about 10 years with these existing. So they, they are concrete signs with rebar inside, so once we do get some cracks, it does tend to provide some challenges with extending the life of the signs. And then we have a smaller portion, about 25% of the existing park signage, that is in good condition overall. With some ongoing maintenance and repairs, we believe that these will potentially last 15 to 20 years currently, as they sit. With that, and what has led us to the existing design process that we're currently in, after going through Request for Proposal process last year, we have found that though these signs have lasted generally well, there have been some challenges that have really, not forced, but have, as staff, we have embarked upon this design process with Smithcraft. We, overall, they're difficult to reproduce, just they're cast signs of concrete, they're not available locally. We've had a firm that is out of business, out of New Mexico, that has historically been providing them, through a Hail Mary on an email address, it was a Gmail address, and somebody actually did respond recently with that, so that we know generally that there is somebody, but not here locally, that does provide them. I mentioned the exposed aggregate concrete, especially early on and later on in its life, it tends to be very brittle. And with that, it can be very difficult to make repairs that blend in very well, as well, with that. So with the existing signage, we found that it's difficult to customize the signs, to make them different from each other, except for the naming. And with that, you see the old logo in the middle of the signs. We can modify the existing signage, whether it be to update logo standards, or potentially even a change, or Redden Park changing to Michelle Brooks' Tetris Park, is, you can really unnamed the park sign basically with it, but it's really difficult with the existing footprint that we have to actually add additional level, letters within that. So modification has been very difficult. And then as somebody who's supported installations, the three-part system, the two, what we call the pucks on the bottom and the stick across the top, especially when they're earlier in their life, is really challenging to install, just based on that brittleness, but also based on some of the weight of the existing. So that has led us to the design process and the public input that we sought, and I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thanks, Craig. So knowing that the park monument signs are part of our non-living infrastructure, and as Craig mentioned, they're assets that need to be maintained, and then ultimately, at some point in time, replaced. About mid-2022, we went through a competitive Request for Proposal process, ultimately looking at design, fabrication, and installation. And so Smithcraft was selected for that, for that contract. And shortly after that, created a, essentially, they started initial design, and then we created a project page. That project page had information about the project itself, timeline information, the public meeting, as well as information for a community outreach for a survey. So the survey started in November of 2022 and was open for one month. The survey, as you see depicted on the page there, did not ask questions specific to the four pictures shown, as in style A, B, C, and D, rather asked questions about elements of signage, so horizontal versus vertical orientation, concrete base versus gabion base, different types of steel nameplate, and then ultimately, the, one of the final questions was about additional information on the sign, whether that be a color block design or an information panel. With that, you'll see that there were over 850 responses, or, you know, shy of 900 responses, so we had significant amount of community input. And overall, the horizontal was chosen as a favorite over vertical for orientation, concrete compared to gabion, and then a rusted steel sign or nameplate versus perforated in stainless steel, and then information panel instead of color, a color block panel. One note on the information panel, an additional question was asked, if they selected information panel as an option, what would they like to see on that information panel? And park history was approximately 65% of the selected choice on that as well. And you'll see with the, this picture was depicted before, but it does bear resemblance quite a bit to our existing. Obviously, it's an updated, more modern version of what we have, obviously with a concrete base, that circular puck, so it's similar. So the horizontal concrete base, rusted steel nameplate, and information panel with park history was ultimately the options or elements that were selected as part of the public outreach. With that, there were 118 comments mentioning or liking wanting to keep the existing monument signage. They ranged anywhere from something like, "Don't replace them, it's a waste of money, spend the money elsewhere," all the way to, "I didn't realize I had an affinity for the current park monument signage until you put the survey out and asked these questions." So it ranged quite a bit. With that, it caused us to take a brief pause and make sure that we considered all the facts in play. Consider, obviously, as Craig had mentioned before, that the monument signs are assets, they need to be maintained, and once again, at some point in time, replaced, but also acknowledging that there's a community appreciation for the existing concrete signage. We went back to the Parks, Recreation, Golf, and W. Secretary Board for some additional input, and ultimately, you know, seeking some support in our recommendation moving forward. They did propose changing the smooth concrete to an aggregate, so you'll see depicted there the same, it was version D essentially, with that horizontal signage, concrete base, with aggregate instead of just a smooth concrete as an option. So with that, our recommendations are to repair the existing monument signage, to extend their lifespan where possible, to finalize the Smithcraft design of the new monuments, whether that's with the smooth concrete or the aggregate, and then ultimately utilize the Smithcraft design for replacement in new signage. One additional component that the Parks and Rec Board asked for was to try to, I don't wanna say expedite, it's probably not the right word, but to eliminate or reduce the amount of time that we would have two different types of signage out throughout the park system for consistency, but also trying to balance that with financial prudence. And then obviously, that's gonna be based upon funding, and obviously knowing that our funding happens annually, so. With that, we're happy to take your questions or directions, concerns.
Thank you so much. Let me first go to Councilmember Garland.
Thank you. I really appreciate this. A couple of years ago, I started working with the Tempe YMCA on rural road to try to figure out how we can spiffy up the front, the painting, the grass, and all that stuff, and trying to find ways to get the trees down on the side, and truly try to make it look better. One of the things was the signage that was out on the road, one of these signs, and thank goodness, somebody, one of you guys came out there and at least painted the white back in the center, so it looked a little bit better. But there's still damage to that sign, and so I understand that being able to remake this, put this back together, or try to find the mold to do the same thing, would be a little more difficult. But I do love the fact that you were looking at and listening to input on this, because I think the design that you have on Slide 9, you know, kind of looks similar to what we have. I think the exposed aggregate is a great idea. That just looks so nice, and it seems to be similar to the other one, and it gives you the ability to put longer names on that sign with some of the names that we have that we're gonna be changing. I also like the information that's on the other side of the tall, the pillar aggregate, because I think one of the things that is sad about our parks is that we have them named Corbel, we have Kiwanis. People don't know why they're named that. And I think being able to tell the story, tell some of the history of Tempe, I love the fact that you're gonna have, or you can look at having something like that on there, so when people go to that park, they can see it. And I have been to a number of Arts in the Park events, and I always look at these signs, and some of them are in horrible shape. So I appreciate what you're doing. I think that what you came up with on Slide 9 looks really great, and I look forward to seeing what you guys can do to fix those and make them better. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Garland just said. I think the new designs look awesome, and we have several options here, and they all look great. Unfortunately, I'm on the opposite side of the public, and five of six of the things you asked them. And here's why, I really like Style B. I like the vertical, I like that look a lot. I love the idea, to Councilmember Garland's point, of having the information about how, what brought us to name the park, how long it's been there, you know, who was the mayor that made it, you know, whatever it is that we include in these types of things. And my only real issue with, because knowing that that is the thing that I like the most about the new signs, is the additional information. My thing with the horizontal signs is, you'd basically have to be sitting on your butt to read that, right? Even if you're like, I mean, that's only gonna be a foot, maybe two off the ground. And I'm not gonna sit 'em, the pavement's hot, and, you know, knees are bad, it's just a whole ordeal to do that. So that would be, look, if I got to pick one, I would go with Style B, but I understand that we're not even there yet. I just wanted to point out that I really like their vertical styles, particularly because it gives the accessibility to that additional information that we're including. And I think you may have said this, but I'm not quite sure, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the parks that have been renamed, they will take precedent, right? We start with those ones?
We've identified those as, Councilmember Keating, as our precedence, as well as a few others that are in the worst condition. So we recognize that those take priority.
Yeah. Great. I really appreciate it. Looks fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let me go to Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I like your guys' process. I mean, I enjoyed you guys, how you got to the point of what sign to choose, and I can stand by it. The aggregate and the smooth, I'm, you know, really, I kind of tend to go towards the smooth. But, you know, it's kind of one of those things, it doesn't really hold up the process, you know, but the smooth kind of just looks cleaner. Yes, on the information and how it's positioned as Style D. And then, yeah, I think that if you guys are gonna tackle the renaming of the parks first, it seems like, yeah, I can understand the parks, people just kind of say, hey, try to get it going as quick as possible. I think you probably, if you, you know, and being mindful with the money, two, three a year, I don't know. Eventually, we're gonna catch up and get all the signs, it's just gonna take a little bit, but I think whatever the process is, I think it's not gonna overnight happen, but I think it's gonna take some years, but I think we'll get there, and you just do your plan and take care of the ones that are crumbling first, and then go down the list. So, yeah, you're good.
Quick thing, Councilmember, before you close, can you give me your top two, just to make sure I've got those?
D with the concrete-based, is that, is this another one?
That's D. They just changed the title.
But it's just changed it. So, well, I don't know if my top two would be D, but then the aggregate would be my second. So the smooth concrete would be my first, aggregate would be second.
Yeah. So, where is that one?
It's not even a...
Slide 9.
Oh, slide, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at the screen.
So they have, the aggregate, is that the one that...
Yeah, and maybe a point of clarification, as Alex mentioned earlier, the options depicted here are kind of a mix. We just ended up landing based on public input on Option D, but it could have been a mix of Option D with Option C with some of the elements. Folks got a chance to pick orientation, base material, nameplate, and accent panel, rather than do you like A, B, C, or D. It ended up where the highest votes went to the combination that led into D ultimately.
Yeah. I'm just straight D.
Okay, perfect. But let me go to Vice Mayor Adams?
Just quick, I like the vertical, because I find the signs hard to find when I'm driving on the road, and they're just so low to the ground. It's like I drive right by them. And also maybe a little more color on the signs, so they pop out more. I just want people that maybe have visual problems to be able to see them better. So that's my problem with the horizontal. I just really, I don't know, has anybody else had that problem? Like, you drive right by it, okay, no one?
No, I agree with you. I was just... I was just, quick questions here, that, can they get a little bit raised up even more so?
That's a great comment that we can pursue with the, the design team. It, certainly it's an element that we could, we could include.
And, and just maybe a, a little more color, because they're kind of boring.
So you like, uh, uh, B with your, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes, I like B.
B, okay.
With the gabions.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's see. Anyone else, um, Councilmember Birkini?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you for, for allowing that input and then recognizing a point where you wanted to go back out again to the, the Parks Recreation Golf and Cemetery Board. Um, I like D. I, I agree with residents. I think it's easier to see if you're driving and trying to find a park, to see the horizontal sign, and with either of the concrete, concrete. I like the smoother finish, but I won't argue that one.
And, uh, I, I like D as well. I mean, so we have clear consensus that, um, that, uh, concepts B and D would be the ones that we would want to. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Uh, yes, so, um, I'm good with D, I mean, that's what our residents want, um, but if we, like, if we could just elevate it so it's easier to see and maybe a little more color, that, that, I'd be happy with that. Uh, so I would go with D.
Okay. Councilmember Birkini?
So are we putting this to the survey, or are we just?
Or, or, great question, Councilmember Birkini.
That's a good question.
Our recommendation working with the board is to advance option D, um, as identified there.
Okay.
Or, or what ended up being option D. We certainly appreciate the comments of making it more visible, potentially looking at raising the height for multiple reasons that we've heard here, so that's, that's the consensus that we've heard if that is a role of council.
So, yeah, my, so yeah, D's fine, but yes, I would like to see it raised up a little bit. Um, and yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah. I, 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 part of why I think I really like option D, I mean, it was solid, I like the fact that that was the one that our residents chose and the community input I know is valuable to each and every one of us. But part of it is I, I love the ability to change out the signs if the logo changes at some point, but the other thing is, we just went through a very extensive process with our community of renaming these parks with an incredible amount of community input. And I believe that the people who these parks are being renamed after have the right, and their families have, you know, frankly, have the right to have those stories told about who these incredible people are, who we renamed the parks after. That was not something that the council did by ourselves, that was something that we did, uh, in conjunction with all of our residents. And so I think it would be a shame, as an example, to rename a park to Michelle Brooks Totris Park, and all of us knew her, and for people to go to that park and just see the name and not have the story about what an incredible woman she was. And so I think it really pays homage to her, but frankly, to her family members who had a chance to see this park named after this great woman. So I think that that's part of why I like, I, I love this option of changing these out because it, it is more flexible in terms of, for changes that might come down the road, but I think the stories of these folks deserve to be told, so. Councilmember Navarro?
Uh, when you talk about the, uh, signage, uh, two things came when we were speaking, just the ability, and this might be more cost, and I'm not going to die on this one, but the ability to light up the lettering, um, just kind of the visual, I think it'll kind of look sharp.
Hmm.
Or, uh, or if it's kind of, we have our ballpark, even maybe a reflective, something that can see it.
Councilmember Navarro, a great, great comment, would be happy to look into that and see.
Yeah.
And, and then even report back what a final design would look like in a council update packet before we implement.
Very cool. Thanks.
Councilmember Birkini?
Well, now to Councilmember Navarro's point, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, maybe we could put a little solar cell on there to keep it lit up at night. That's it. Thanks.
I agree. I like it.
My, my only question about the, the lighting would be, would there be any issue with it shining into people's homes or something of that nature, or would the lights go off at 10 o'clock when the parks close? Just, just making sure that no one's going to complain about visual blight, although I like the idea.
I, I think it's dim enough, you could probably do it, it's dim enough to where it's not going to affect her.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm, I'm hearing light up the letters is kind of what I'm hearing? Okay, great. Thank you.
And just Craig, Alex, do you need any, any further, I know we were talking about this before, but about the, uh, smooth concrete or the aggregate concrete, do you need any further clarification on that from us, or?
I think we're good with consensus with what's shown here on the bottom right, looking to elevate, looking at into lighting potentials.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Excellent.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the call of the audience for committee of the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction or status update this evening, so I will move on to item number 5B, which is council committees in progress, updates is needed. Are there any updates on items 5B1, 5B2 or 5B3? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item